And welcome to the September 3, 2020, special work session to discuss our superintendent's search. And I'm very pleased today to introduce once again. I know we have Mrs. Messina with us and I believe she's on the telephone at a doctor's appointment. We have Dr. Bill Vogel with us today and we have Mr. John Reichert, all three of which are with the Florida School Boards Association, who the school board has hired to conduct this superintendent's search. So, board members, I trust that each of you have received the email outlining the three different areas that we're going to be talking about today. And so if you want to pull your sheet so that you'll have that to refer to as we walk through our timelines and other associated information this afternoon. I also want to thank our board members for making the time to be here today. This is such an important duty of ours in choosing our next superintendent of Polk County Public Schools. So without further ado, I would like to turn it over to Mr. Reichert if you would start our discussion today.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, and good afternoon to the board members, legal counsel, and others who may be present. Again, as Ms. Cunningham mentioned, we did provide your clerk to the board with an initial draft of our research timeline and hopefully you have that in front of you. I would like, before I get into the details of each event, just kind of give you a brief overview in kind of segments of our research timeline. Basically, from today until October 13, the events will kind of center around collecting community staff and student input through forums or other formats. We really would during that time period, conduct our online survey, which will be prepared for the community to respond to one survey and your staff to respond to another survey. Along with those, that time period, we do have several meetings with the board to kind of address certain items that are needed as we prepare to create our advertisement based on your input as a board and also after reviewing the input from the community and the staff members. Around October 19 through November 20, we will run our ads. That ad will run for four weeks. We typically would look at maybe five weeks or so, but it certainly is doable with a four-week advertisement period. We also will during that time period, work on the orientation for your citizen screening committee and the board will also address various items during that time period. From around the first of December, the first two weeks of December, the screening committee will complete their work and submit to the board their list of names for your further consideration. Prior to the winter break, we would then have a meeting for the board to determine if they want to identify semifinalists from that group that comes from the screening committee or move right into finalists. And that would put us into the first of January with really having the board finalize and select finalists with the onsite interviews to be January 20, 21, 22. And that would give the board a January 25 date to select the superintendent. And that would give us about a four-week transition period in February prior to the projected start date of the new superintendent of March 1. So those are kind of the three segments that the timeline calls for. So if with Madam Chairman's approval, I'll kind of jump back to the start of the timeline and run through some of these dates and the details of the activities that we would have during those timeframes. Okay, so today we're here to kind of talk about the timeline, get into the pre-search discussion. We had initially put in to review, initial review of the online surveys that would be provided for staff, community to respond to. I think with the materials we would like to cover today as a priority, we will possibly send those sample surveys out to the board tomorrow and have you look over those for a week to kind of see what that survey would look like for community and staff. If you would look then please down to September 14, you'll notice that that date... Yes, sir, I see a question?
Yeah, Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Wilson.
My apologies for the interruption. Last Tuesday, we had a conversation about asking Superintendent Bird to stay through June. And I would like to revisit that conversation if it's possible. And I'd like to share very briefly, if it's okay, my reason for suggesting that. Is that okay?
Yes, sir, and I think it's appropriate here because I was going to ask some questions about this, what I would consider a very condensed timeline because of the timing. So yes, sir, go ahead, Mr. Wilson.
So prior to last Tuesday's work session, I had a conversation with Superintendent Bird. And as part of that conversation, I asked her to reconsider her resignation, her retirement, and I asked her to reconsider staying on as superintendent. And she shared with me her reasons for not being able to do that, and I found them very compelling. So when we had that meeting last Tuesday and we were asking her to stay longer than the two months we had already asked her to stay, it seemed to me that we needed a good reason to do that and a compelling reason to do that. Otherwise, it seemed to be unfair to her. And as we went through that conversation, I, from my perspective, you know, there didn't seem to be a compelling reason to do that. One of the things I heard that did resonate with me is that we wanted more time for community involvement. But I also heard that during the last search that the community wasn't particularly involved. So that didn't, that didn't really resonate with me. However, since then, there has been an outpouring from our community and it's clear to me now that they want to be very much engaged in this process, that they want to have a significant voice and a significant input. I'd already heard that from faculty and staff and that's why I argued last time for making sure they weren't involved. Now I've heard from our community and honestly, it was a considerable outpouring of support to extend the search, to slow it down, to ensure that we have significant and appropriate input from our community. And you know what? I am encouraged by that. I think it's wonderful that our community wants to be involved in this process and I think we should encourage that in every possible way. I should mention also that I reached out to Superintendent Bird because I wanted to hear it from her first, that she would indeed be willing to stay through the end of June. She said she would. She shared that with me, but that she was not able to stay past the end of June. And I certainly respect that and I honor her wishes. But, you know, I think, I think that it is important that we engage our community. So given that they want to be involved in this process and that we have, you know, that that would require slowing the process down somewhat, I would respectfully request that we revisit that conversation. And, and I want to say this too. I wanted to share with you Superintendent Bird's reasons for saying that she would stay. She indicated to me that she was very grateful for the support that she has received from this community, very grateful for the support that she's received from this school district. And if she could reciprocate in some way by helping out as we go through this process, that she would be willing to do that. So I would hope that we could, that we could go back and revisit that conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. And I too, after our last meeting where I had made the suggestion to see if she might would stay through the end of the fiscal year, through June 30, between our work session last Tuesday and our board meeting, I met with Superintendent Bird also and asked her outright what she thought. I apologized upfront and said, really wasn't sure what your thoughts are, but I feel like I need to ask you because I just kind of threw it out there as a suggestion to the board. And so she said, you know, Lori, she said, let me talk with my husband and I'll get back to you. And Superintendent Bird, in fact, called me the next day and said, you know, certainly we have some vacation plans and some things, which is natural. And I said, well, I don't think that would be a problem. Quite frankly, we all have vacation and time that we take off. I'm just hoping that we could have your leadership through the end of this school year, through June 30 of 2021. And she said, after talking with my husband and my family, I would be willing to do that. She said because, she said if it will help the district out and serve in some capacity with all the good things that have happened while she's been here, she felt like that, that she would be able to do that if the board chose to do so. So I'm not sure if everybody's had a chance to talk to her. I do have some hands up, so let me get comments. And then I don't know if it would be prudent to perhaps ask her to tell you herself here on this call. She's not here, but I can find out if she's anywhere where she could be zoomed in so that everybody could hear it from Ms. Bird as well. So next I have Ms. Fields.
Thank you, Ms. Cunningham. I had shared my concerns at the last meeting that we had about rushing the process. And I reviewed the timeline and it's definitely a rush. A lot of things happening in December. And as I said last time, people, for the most part, they're getting ready for the holidays and they're not interested in something as serious as this. And this is going to be one of the biggest tasks that we're going to be undertaking as a board. And I don't think we need to rush it. I don't think we need to call Superintendent Bird. I think that we need to make a decision that we need to slow down the process to a point where we're going to do a quality search and adjust the timeline accordingly. And, and then ask her, tell her that we have had discussion, that we understand the value of having her through the end of the school year. She is not interested in staying beyond the school year. I think everybody knows that. She is not interested in staying beyond the school year. She's only wanting to help the students, the staff, and the community to make sure that we can do the best job possible to, to get a quality superintendent after she departs. So I'm happy that Mr. Wilson has revisited this conversation because if he had not revisited, I was going to do that as well.
Thank you, Ms. Cunningham.
Thank you, Ms. Fields. And yeah, I echo the same thoughts on the search itself. I feel that once, if we do a very rushed search and talking with the folks from FSBA, this timeline is great, but it is very condensed, if that's my word. And I think if we could take the time that's necessary to do the search as we want and to have the community involvement and have time to do it properly, we will be able to find someone that will be here for years to come rather than just a few years. Because really, who's looking during a pandemic to jump ship in the middle of their own issues going on in their school districts? So I think for so many reasons, this is a really smart decision, if it's that of the board. Next, we have Ms. Miller.
Thank you. Sorry, I have to get to that mute button. I appreciate this conversation today. I think we were all taken back by a letter that was issued in the middle of a pandemic with dates that she would be leaving in the middle of a pandemic. I mean, that's kind of what we knew from the beginning. I talked to the superintendent last week and requested a meeting with her because I've not been able to meet with her so we can have our own conversation. That's not been set yet, so I request now publicly that we have that meeting set. So if we're working together until the end of June, that we have some great collaboration, which is what has been lacking. So I understand the process and I understand the community wanting to be involved. And that's what I'm hearing as far as everyone in the community, not just Central Lakeland, but there's this entire district that wants to be involved in this, in search. So I am interested to hear what she has planned until the end of June. And I look forward to that meeting being set. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Ms. Reynolds?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I had a very similar conversation to Mr. Wilson's and Ms. Fields's with Superintendent Bird, with the greatest concern for me being the overlap. When you have a $2 billion business that does transportation, education, food services, custodial work, a little bit of everything, only having a month to transition is not really enough. And that's if whoever agrees to come will be willing to leave their current job with less than a week's notice, which if they're willing to leave their current job with less than a week's notice, that gives me some concerns too because would they be willing to leave us with less than a week's notice in the future? And my, our, of course, our conversation was very similar in that she would be willing to stay through the end of the school year to make sure that we can make that transition as smooth as possible for our teachers and staff and students and this community really, who she's built some great relationships with. So I would be very encouraged if we could have her stay until the end of the school year.
Thank you, Ms. Reynolds. Mr. Townsend?
Superintendent announced her retirement in late May. This timeline is March 1. I'm not sure why 10 months is a difficult timeline to meet. That letter included a lie. It said, she lied to the public and said there had been material blurring of operations and policy by board, board members when there had not been any, and she has never said what that material blurring was. There's no reason to believe she's not lying now that come the end of June when no one applies. The point of this is for, is so that no one will apply. The, why would anybody internally apply now? You know, the presence is going to loom over everything. There's no reason to believe at all that she's not going to be the superintendent here in perpetuity. At, at the time that she made her retirement based on a lie, I asked her, I asked everybody on the board, point blank, should we delay this search so that we can have an election and this can be played out in the election, et cetera? Superintendent would not identify the board member she was talking about. She would not, as she still has not, pointed out what the material blurring was. And third, everybody on the board was, oh no, we got to move forward. This is very important. We can do this, blah, blah, blah. You know, I think this is passive aggressiveness at its worst. You know, I've lost the election. That's fine. This is dishonest to the public. It's going to discourage applications and she will end up being the superintendent here for quite a bit of time to come. So I think it's important to be honest with the public. That's what I always tried to do and will continue to do. But to pretend like this is some sort of extend the year, it's not. So that's, that's all I've said.
Thank you. Okay, any other comments before we go forward? Mr. Wilson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this question is for Dr. Vogel and Mr. Reichert. Is it your opinion that we won't have applications for this position?
Dr. Vogel, I think you're muted.
Okay, Bill Vogel, can you hear me now? Yes, I believe we will have an extremely strong field of applicants. In fact, right before this meeting, I was contacted and I believe we will have a field that the board will be proud of because with the progress that the board and Polk County has made, you have a very desirable district, moving your grade to a B and all the progress that's made. So I believe we'll have a strong field.
Thank you, Dr. Vogel, and thank you, Mr. Wilson, for the great question. At this point, I guess I want to ask if we should discuss then pausing the search at this point in time and move forward, continuing with reopening schools and everything else. I don't think we need to adhere to this if we have consensus. So let's see what...
Ms. Cunningham, my hand was up, please.
Oh, she doesn't have you. I'm sorry. I can't see you because you have a picture on your thing.
Yes, I know.
I know. It's hard. So, okay, go ahead, Ms. Fortney.
Yeah, back to FSBA, is this an unrealistic timeline? That was my question the last time we met, to get quality applicants.
Mr. Vogel, I think you're muted again.
Mr. Reichert, would you want to comment on the timeline and how it's been adjusted to do everything we can to provide all the components for a successful search?
Thank you, Dr. Vogel. It, I will agree, it is a condensed timeline. It is certainly FSBA will work as hard as needed to comply with the timeline. As I mentioned, I think earlier when I was kind of doing the general overview, our advertisement window is somewhat short. I think another couple of weeks would enhance that advertisement period. The, the time for public input is a two-week period. We would typically maybe have another week to add to that, depending on the number of forums that we would, would like to have. And, and I do understand with Polk County wanting to bring in students to provide some valuable input, some districts have not done that. So that would add a little bit to, to that schedule. Again, very valuable input from the students, but the, the two-week window would be potentially some back-to-back days and maybe double sessions even on one day. So the opportunities would certainly, you know, be honestly be expanded if we could add another week to that process. But certainly FSBA will certainly respond and make work what scheduled the board would like for us to.
So I'm hearing you say it's three weeks short, basically, in a, in a long-range plan. And I don't want to pause anything only because we will be back in the same boat that we have been since May. You know, adjust dates, et cetera, but you know, pausing is not a question for me.
Go ahead, Dr. Vogel.
Yes, I think when we were talking last time, the concern that Mrs. Fields brought up about what we would be doing over the winter break was something that we all talked about as a challenge. So, and I do agree that if we do pause, we need to move forward with maybe revised timeline and with a new date when the superintendent, when you would like to hire the new superintendent. Perhaps that date could be maybe right after spring break. And then we could move some of the events be after the first of the year. So I agree, if we decide to move the timeline, I would still say we need to schedule the community involvement before the winter break and then be ready to advertise sometime around that point. And I'd like maybe, Mr. Reichert, could you expand on that a little bit?
Well, that certainly I would agree that as much input as we had prior to the winter break and give ample opportunities for all of the community and staff members to have that input. And if we could kick off with a, a strong advertisement period in January, that certainly would give you, you know, more time. And there are, there are five sites that we would recommend, not to name them all now, for your advertisements to be placed in. And they're certainly the, even a week or two longer on those sites, you know, we get, when we advertise for a vacancy of superintendent, you will, you will get a few immediately when the ad is first posted. And I have had candidates to say that after, say, a month and a half or a two-month advertisement period, I just saw the ad and I would like to apply. Do I have time? So extending that four-week advertisement period, I think, would, would be on a positive note. Yes.
That makes much better sense to me. This is Sarah Fortney, yes. And, you know, I just don't want to waste time. You know, I didn't waste it in my classroom and I sure don't want to waste it in this position. So that, that's my biggest concern.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Fortney. Ms. Miller?
Thank you. I just want to, kind of what I miss, what Ms. Fortney's saying and back to what Mr. Wilson reminded us in the last meeting. This is a business and we have to move forward. The board did not initiate a retirement. We did not ask to get a retirement, especially with this kind of timeframe. I do think the community needs to be involved and if we need to extend that, that's, that's purposeful. But pausing is not, is not anything that I think we should do or the community expects us to do because now it seems we will hear, I'm sure, that this is not what was intended or designed. And we want to be authentic and transparent with our community. So extending the timeline to allow for community involvement, I think, is great. Stopping this process or pausing this process and trying to stretch it out forever is not fair to your taxpayers or this district who's trying to move forward. So I appreciate that, Ms. Cunningham.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. And let me rephrase it. When I said pause, I meant not to go at the lightning speed that this original timeline was set at. So I used the wrong word. We'll just have a little bit more time to be able to do it and to do it properly, which I do believe we need. Ms. Reynolds?
My thoughts were very similar to those of my colleagues as far as slowing down the timeline. I think we still should be starting the community meetings in the next few weeks. Ideally, I think if we could have, be able to offer by beginning to mid-March and then have them start by beginning of April. I do think that we need to give a little bit of time between offering the position and a start date for, even for a transition period just because I'm assuming that they likely are going to be coming from another district and have things to tie up there. I know Superintendent Bird asked our cabinet to give 30 days' notice, which I think is...
that certainly would give you, you know, more time. And, and there, there are five sites that we would recommend, not to name them all now, for your advertisements to be placed in. And they're certainly the, the, even a, a week or two longer on those sites. You know, we get, when we advertise for a vacancy of superintendent, you, you will get a few immediately when the ad is first posted. And I have had candidates to say that after, say, a month and a half or a two-month advertisement period, I just saw the ad and, and I would like to apply. Do I have time? So extending that four-week advertisement period, I think would, would be on the, on a positive note. Yes.
That makes much better sense to me. This is Sarah Fortney, yes. And you know, I just don't want to waste time. You know, I didn't waste it in my classroom and I sure don't want to waste it in this position. So that, that's my biggest concern.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Fortney. Ms. Miller?
Thank you. I just want to, kind of what I miss, what Ms. Fortney's saying and a back to what Mr. Wilson reminded us in the last meeting. This is a business and we have to move forward. The board did not initiate a retirement. We did not ask to get a retirement, especially with this kind of timeframe. I do think the community needs to be involved and if we need to extend that, that's, that's purposeful. But pausing is not, is not anything that I think we should do or the community expects us to do because now it seems we will hear, I'm sure, that this is not what was intended or designed. And we want to be authentic and transparent with our community. So extending the timeline to allow for community involvement, I think is great. Stopping this process or pausing this process and trying to stretch it out forever is not fair to your taxpayers or this district who's trying to move forward. So I appreciate that, Ms. Cunningham.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. And let me rephrase it. When I said pause, I meant not to go at the lightning speed that this original timeline was set at. So I used the wrong word. We'll just have a little bit more time to be able to do it and to do it properly, which I do believe we need. Ms. Reynolds?
And my thoughts were very similar to those of my colleagues as far as slowing down the timeline. I think we still should be starting the community meetings in the next few weeks. Ideally, I think if we could have, be able to offer by beginning to mid-March and then have them start by beginning of April. I do think that we need to give a little bit of time between offering the position and a start date for even for a transition period, just because I'm assuming that they likely are going to be coming from another district and have things to tie up. There, I know Superintendent Bird asked our cabinet to give 30 days notice, which I think is very fair for a cabinet position. That I just would like to see us give them a little bit of time before they start in Polk County.
Thank you, Ms. Reynolds. Ms. Fields?
Thank you, Ms. Cunningham. Mr. Wilson made a statement when he opened up his comments about, he had asked Ms. Superintendent Bird if she would reconsider and stay beyond her time. And she told him that she would not. And she's told me that as well. And I don't have any reason to believe that Ms. Bird would be lying. She's not a liar, not in my opinion. I think that, I wish she would stay. I wish she would change her mind. But that's not just, I don't believe that's going to happen. I think that she's going to leave. As she said, if we want her to stay until June, I think we need to make a decision and move forth. I agree with Dr. Vogel, all of the comments that he made about the adjustments that can be made and not doing anything that is of, of, of involvement with the community during the month of December. And then aligning ourselves so that we can have someone in place by the time that they recommend that we have it, based on when we want to have someone in, in place. And I think we really need to value and appreciate the FSBA. They have the ability. They have the knowledge. They have the skills. We've hired them. And we need to trust them to provide us with the expertise and the knowledge that we want to have in place so that we can get someone in the position before Ms. Bird departs. And I just think we just need to make a decision. Are we going to come to consensus or what we're going to do here? I don't know, Wes, if we need to do anything, we do, we need to vote on this. So I know we can't do it today because this is a work session. But what do we need to do here?
You're correct.
Thank you, Ms. Fields. Go ahead, Mr. Bridges.
It is, it is a work session and no vote, no vote can be taken here. If the board wishes to, to take this route, the first thing you can do is since the superintendent has already advised you that she's willing to do it, you can decide on what timeline you want to be so you know how long you would like her to stay. Then make a formal request for her to do so and, and ask her to respond in writing. Seems like a reasonable way to do it.
And if, if we can come to a discussion today, at least come to a consensus, that that's what we would like, then I would be happy to communicate that to Ms. Bird and have something ready for discussion if you would like on Tuesday at our next work session and board meeting. Okay, Mr. Wilson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you for the clarification about the pause. I, I also am not interested in a pause. I, I think we simply need to slow down a little bit. And, you know, the folks who have contacted me, some of them have been high-profile community leaders. And they're asking to serve on this search committee. So that does not presuppose that there's any, that there's any consideration whatsoever being given to the superintendent staying past the end of June. They simply want to ensure that we get the best possible candidate that we can get. And I think there'd be an awful lot of folks who would be disingenuous if, if based on the response that I've received. And, and I, I, I don't think that's practical. So I, I don't think that's a, a real practical response. So anyway, thank you for clarifying that.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Ms. Miller?
I just have a quick question because I'm sure it'll come up to me. The financial impact of bringing someone in for that review. So are we saying that we need to extend it, extend it another month? I'm just looking for the financial impact of starting a contract and then having someone support in that role, maintaining the contract for a longer amount of time. The extension is, we're not going to hire, we're going to hire somebody at the end of, are we looking at the end of March? And then April, May, June, they're being, they're being shadowed? I don't, can someone explain the timeline they're thinking of and the financial impact it would be? I would appreciate that. Thanks.
Dr. Vogel?
Yes, I, I think we previously talked about whoever is selected is likely going to have a, be in a current position. So I think there'll be a time period when that person will have to wrap up their activities. Many times in our searches, when we have a transition period, the individual coming in will work with the board and may not be able to come every day. So the key is naming the superintendent when you're going to do that. And then we can work out a transition time that meets everybody's need at that point. So it doesn't necessarily have to mean that you'll have someone every day on site if you, if you select somebody in March. So we can work that out with the board. I don't think it'll be a significant financial impact.
Thank you, Dr. Vogel. Mr. Townsend?
First, I, I want to bet Lynn a dollar on, on that. But I think in terms of this meeting, I think Lynn's the key, the key vote here. And it's pretty, pretty clear that, that a majority of the board wants, wants her to stay through end, end of the year. Man, again, I, my, my reasons for why I think that's a terrible idea are on the, are on the record, but I'm, but I'm not going to try to do anything to stand in the way, 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 way of it. I mean, I think that's, that seemed, that seems to be policy. So I mean, we should, we should move forward accordingly.
Thank you, Mr. Townsend. Seeing nobody else's hands raised, do we want to discuss this and see if we can come to consensus today? Is that the pleasure of the board? Yes, okay. I'm hearing some yeses. So how do we want to do this? Let's see. Mr. Wilson, go ahead.
Well, I, I think we have discussed it and I, and I think you have consensus. So I, I think what, what, what I'm hearing at least is that the board is, is asking you to reach out to Superintendent Bird and ask her, and ask her to stay.
Okay. Thank you for your comments, Mr. Wilson. Ms. Reynolds?
Sorry, I couldn't get my hand on fast enough. Those were my comments as well, that I would be in support of it. And it sounds like we have consensus on the board.
Mr. Townsend, go ahead.
Yeah, just to, just, just, just to clarify, I think there's direction on the, on the board. I think it's clear that, that a majority of the board, there's a direction they're taking. I don't think there's consensus because I'm not part of that consensus, just for the record. But like, it's, it's not a vote, you know, so it's.
Okay, so, Mr. Bridges, should I ask each individual board member, yea or nay, to make it on the record? To ask superintendent to stay through the end of June 30th?
You can, you can ask them, if you have a majority that have indicated their desire to do so.
Yes, sir.
Then that is sufficient to go forward and ask her the question.
Okay.
I would suggest that you ask her in writing and ask her to respond in writing.
Okay, very good. I think I have my marching orders from the board. Ms. Miller?
Are we going to have, is FSBA going to come back with a timeline? Is that what we're going to look at next? Because I would like to have a clear timeline, defined timeline, because we haven't had that. So when, when are we going to expect that from FSBA?
Okay, so you have had, you, you received a clear timeline. That's what we looked at today.
But it's not-
But the revised, no, because we didn't know that we would be changing that, quite frankly. So let's give FSBA an opportunity to go back and revise the timeline. My question to the board would be then, by when do we want to have a superintendent or Dr. Vogel? Do you have a thought if Superintendent Bird is willing to stay till June 30th? What would that look like as far as you're concerned? Could you give us some advice?
Certainly. John, I'd like you to lead this discussion. I was thinking sometime around, and I don't have the spring break dates for Polk County in front of me here, but talk a little bit about what it would look like with those three parcel, parts that you have if we finished up around the end of March or early April.
Let me just interject. Polk County's spring break is the week of March 22nd through March the 26th. March 22 through March 26th.
Thank you.
Go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I would just kind of quick responses. Look to have your community involvement piece completed prior to the winter break with all the, all the factors that we want to provide that opportunity for. Along the way, we will, I will go back and reschedule several meetings with the board to start addressing some of the things in preparation for receiving all that input from the community. Setting things like your salary range that you would like to advertise, the length of contract that you would like to offer the new superintendent, what would you consider as a complete application packet? There, there are some things along the way that certainly we will not put off. We will schedule them to have those needed items completed by December in preparation for an advertisement period that would start around the first of January. If not, maybe over the winter break. I'll kind of look at the timeline, see how that plays in. Would allow for your citizen screening committee to have up to three meetings to make their determination of names to send forward to you. Look at selecting the superintendent, potentially if you would prefer the week before spring break or the week after spring break. I'll kind of look at that. And I did hear, if I can just confirm, that we would like to have the selection made somewhere around the spring break week, before or after. We would like to have maybe at least six, six, five or six weeks for a transition that can be worked out between the two, you know, the Superintendent Bird and the incoming superintendent. And I think I heard a member or two say that they would like to avoid any community input in the month of December because we're all kind of busy and getting ready for that. So I do think that certainly we'll provide ample time for community input between then. So I, I think if, if the board has any preference on selecting the superintendent prior to spring break or after spring break, that would help me kind of nail, nail down the schedule.
Thank you, Mr. Reichert. Ms. Reynolds?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And my preference would be to have the selection made by like the first week of March with the hopes of them being able to start early April as soon after spring break as possible. I just want to make sure that between us selecting them and then starting for a transition period, that we give them a month to wrap up in whichever district they're in.
Thank you, Ms. Reynolds. That can be taken into account, but I think that's very quick. Quite frankly, I would think the extra month to have it done by the end of spring break would be sufficient. But that's just my opinion. Anyone else have comments? If not, I would simply ask FSBA then to reconstruct the timeline as you see would be best in order for us to have a sitting superintendent. In the past, we have had six weeks usually for an overlap, again, realizing that it may not be here every day. But I think that's a great place to start and then working backward from there. So if you could at least put a timeline together after today's conversation, that would be very helpful. And then if we could have it sent to all of us. And then the question is, there were several other things that we were going to discuss today. If we're okay with moving forward with adjusting our timeline with Ms. Bird being willing to stay through the end of the fiscal year now. My question is, do we go on to the next item? To discuss our next, yes. Go ahead, Dr. Vogel.
I would recommend to move forward with the pre-search today while we have the time allotted and that would help us move forward. And then I think another piece, which I know we touched on, is we would really continue setting up all our community involvement sessions, you know, sooner than later, you know, October or late September.
Okay, sir. Sounds good. So I would, hold on. Ms. Reynolds?
All right. I know that Hillsborough's search they recently completed, they had over a three-month overlap. Duval's that they did a few years ago, they had between, they had about a three-month overlap there as well. I'm concerned that looking at other districts that are comparable in size and the largest districts in Florida, that they all seem to be needing more than six weeks. That what, I mean, for comparable districts, are, are you seeing that there's any that are doing six to eight weeks overlap? I know that that's what we've done in the past, but we also, before Superintendent Bird, had an average of a little over a year for superintendents for the, the previous five years to that. So I just would be curious if more overlap may be better for a larger district. It really concerns me to only have six weeks overlap in a district this size.
Go ahead, Dr. Vogel.
We are comfortable with a six-week overlap. We feel that would be sufficient. And in some of the situations you're discussing, the superintendent's contract actually was a full-year contract. So the superintendent was going to be on board. And in, in the case of Hillsborough, I know the superintendent there had to finish up some other work too. But we are comfortable with a six-week overlap.
Okay, Ms. Fields?
Thank you, Ms. Cunningham. I was going to basically say what Dr. Vogel said, that I, I think typically is six to eight weeks. So I would be comfortable, I wouldn't be comfortable going no more than eight weeks. Because hopefully we're going to get someone in who has the experience and the knowledge and the expertise and they're going to be able to pretty much hit the ground running with the support of the superintendent.
Ms. Reynolds?
Thank you. And I just, just looking at what other districts are doing, that really concerns me. But I would encourage us to ask the superintendent what she thinks she would need to kind of show the district to someone else because I just, in a district this size, that just doesn't seem like enough time. But she knows that job better than anyone at this point. So it may be worth asking her what she thinks.
Thank you, Ms. Reynolds. Dr. Vogel?
Yes, Ms. Reynolds, that's a, an excellent idea. We usually work very closely with the current superintendent and the person that's selected to talk about what works best and then include the board in that conversation. So I think in the timeline we're talking about, we still, as Mrs. Fields said, we could have as many as eight weeks or even maybe a little bit more, depending when we do the final selection.
Thank you, Dr. Vogel. Ms. Miller?
Just, I think this is when we defer to the veteran board members who sat here a lot longer and seen a lot more with these searches. I know in the past in other districts, the reason we have such quality support staff is because they step in to help support the new superintendent in the role. And so I, I don't know that I would, I don't have the experience in this search. So I'm going to go with Mrs. Cunningham and Mrs. Field's suggestions and, and proud of the staff, support staff that we have. But interested to see the eight-week, eight-week timeline on that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, everybody, for your comments. And once again, I pretty much defer to the experts, which is our Florida School Boards Association. So Dr. Vogel, if you and the group can put together a new timeline after maybe speaking with our superintendent, I think that would be great. And maybe if we could have something that I could present to the board and to superintendent on Tuesday would be very much appreciated because we'll be meeting this coming Tuesday, September the 8th, for a work session. And then we have a regular board meeting as well. So I'm not sure, would that, would you all be able to put something together for us by then?
Yes, ma'am, absolutely. I'll be glad to do it. And I'll get it to Susan or Linda, I think, and ask them to get it out to y'all. Be, we'll be glad to do it. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much. I think that would give everybody a chance to at least take a look at it and see what they think. And then we can move forward with that. So going back then, so we do have consensus. I will speak to Ms. Bird this afternoon when we're done with our work session. And we'll move forward with that new timeline. And now I would like to turn it back over to either Dr. Vogel or Mr. Reichert to continue with the information to be presented today.
Thank you very much. And I believe Mrs. Messina will be joining us sometime during this afternoon. But we have on the agenda the superintendent pre-search interview. And I believe all board members have in front of them the suggested agenda. Is that correct, Mrs. Cunningham? Correct.
Yes, sir.
John and Andrea and I have had the opportunity to work in Polk County before, and we're really excited to be back working with you. and we're really excited to be back working with you. And what's the purpose of this activity is, it's our opportunity to receive an update from the board on what areas that you're very proud of and what your accomplishments are, and then talk about what the priorities the board will have and the challenges you're facing when you hire a new superintendent. This information is very valuable to us because as we're talking with candidates, it helps us kind of define the focus of the board. It's also very helpful for the entire board to start coming together on what their priorities are. And based on all the conversations that we will have today and in the future, what we do is we take notes on it, and then as we go through this process, the questions that we prepare, the items that are on surveys, all of that comes together into one process. So I think a good place to start, and I'll probably start this off, is with your vision and your mission. And I, I looked and I found that your vision, I want to confirm this is still what your vision is, that every Pope student will be prepared for success in colleges or careers. Is that still the vision? And maybe if we could hear, Mrs. Cunningham, I'll work through you, any board members have any comments on that? Is everybody pretty much on board with what the vision for Pope County Schools is?
Yes, sir. I don't see any hands up. Go, oh, I do. Ms. Miller?
The only input I have on this and from our last, the last two retreats that I've attended, we were working from a strategic plan from 2016, and there was a lot of input given from different board members that we moved towards what other large districts are doing when they talk about the vision for students. And it's about the collaborative overall student experience. And I don't know that that's reflected in anything that we've had, and it was encouraged that we maintain, you know, and not make a lot of core changes to our strategic plan because of the length of time it had been worked on. But I don't know, I think it's, especially with the crisis that we're currently in, we have seen ourselves through our students and our, in our community, that this is about the whole experience of the child, and I don't know that reflects in that mission. Not discounting what that mission says, but none of our, even our strategic plan, when we lead with, you know, not the pillars that the other districts have, building them up with communication and collaboration and student experience, but when we lead with, everybody's going to college, and by the way, we're going to be in A District in two years. I don't know, once again, we talk about being authentic and not checking the box. I think we should talk about the real experience and what we want for kids, all kids, what we want the outcomes to be. And I was one of the voices in those last retreats, the last two retreats that kept talking about, you know, all kids making it, the results for all, what it looks like for everybody that crosses the line. And in our board meetings and our graduation lines, and in our board meetings, we talk about that. We talk about how college isn't for everyone, how independent adults contributing to society in a positive manner was our focus. I'm not sure that we've communicated that in this five-year-old strategic plan very well. So I, I don't want our next superintendent to be led. I think it's a lot of pressure and compliance-based thought process to be led with, with everybody's going to college and this is the district grade we're hunting for. I'd like to see a more whole picture and a process to that, but that's just my personal opinion. Thank you.
And thank you for your comments, Ms. Miller. The only thing I would say is that truly would be an agenda item for our strategic planning session, which we're hopefully going to have soon, once we can get these other things on our calendar. I'm not sure that right now to start this process that we have the time to do strategic planning prior to starting to do our superintendent's search. So while I agree with you, it's time to relook at it, it's time to put emphasis on it, it's time to redo it. I'm just not sure that we can do it in the next few weeks by the time we need to start the search. That would be my thought.
I would like to hear from FSBA. Thank you for that. I would like, and I agree with you, it has to be done strategically in the strategic planning sessions. I would like to hear from FSBA how we communicate that to people coming to apply for that position.
Yes, I, I really appreciate this conversation. As I looked at your strategic plan a few years ago, I was very familiar with it, but I did look like it was, it needs, it's at the time where it needed to be revised. This won't be a problem, but one thing we would do is, that's one of the qualities that we want to seek in whoever applies for the superintendent, because what I'm hearing is, you know, we all say we need to look at a revision of the strategic plan, but it would be really nice if the new superintendent could be part of that process. So I've made a note of that. So I don't think it will impede our search or not having an actual updated plan right now. I do agree with what you're saying, things have changed drastically in the last few years. So, you know, I, I don't think that'll be a problem not having it completed because it would be an advantage to have the new superintendent as part of that process.
I would agree. Thank you, Ms. Miller. That was a great question. Mr. Townsend?
To pile onto that, I mean, I, and we, we, we just did a thing with consensus. You know, the, currently our strategic plan focuses on kids as data and as defined by their career or, or college. I think, is there anyone who thinks they shouldn't be defined by their citizenship and their humanity as well? You know, I, I don't, I, I think that's been really the, the, the push that's been here for the last few, few years. This was discussed at multiple strategic plan processes. You know, is, is there anybody here on the board who's against saying that the citizenship of our kids, the humanity of our kids is going to be an equal consideration with the career and the data of our kids, is what I would ask, and, and communicating that to any applicants.
Ms. Fields?
Thank you, Ms. Cunningham. I want to go back to the question on what specifically are you wanting from us today? Are we here to discuss revisiting and redoing the strategic plan? Are we here to? Mr. Vogel, you shaking your head? No. So yes, because I, I think everybody needs to understand what we're trying to accomplish today, because I think we're a little bit confused on it.
Correct. We always start with the strategic plan to get the feeling from the board on if they're satisfied with the plan or if it needs revision or if they're, and, and what I'm hearing loud and clear is, everybody feels that we need to relook at it, maybe we're not happy with the vision statement, and that's something down the line that we will look at. So when we're advertising for this position, that will be something that we'll look for, some superintendent that has some experience implementing and developing a strategic plan. That's all we really are getting at with that right now. There are some districts that have a very defined strategic plan, and they want to hand it to the superintendent and say, this is what we want to do. I'm hearing right now that, you know, it's time for, to go ahead and revise it. So that's exactly what we're doing as we're going through this. So I think we've accomplished that right now. I don't think we need to spend a lot of time on the strategic plan anymore unless any board members have any questions.
Thank you for the clarity.
Thank you, Ms. Fields. Mr. Wilson?
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. I actually have a couple of comments. I mean, I think there's some conflating of the vision, the mission statement, and the strategic plan. The discussion I heard was that we should, prior to the search, maybe consider revising the mission statement. The strategic plan is, that's a major undertaking, and that needs to be done by the board during a retreat. That's not something we can do on the fly. We can maybe adjust the mission statement, and to that extent, I, I agree with Mr. Townsend. I think that we, we could do a better job of indicating that, that we want to provide a quality education to all of our students, including those who are not college-bound. I've always been a big proponent of that. So, you know, we may do a little wordsmithing on, on the mission statement or the vision, but the strategic, strategic plan is, that's way too, that's a huge undertaking at this point in time. And again, that's something for the board anyway to, to make a decision on, and, and we spend days working on that, not, not just a few minutes. So those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Dr. Vogel?
Yes, I, I would suggest that it's not necessary right now to change the, the mission statement. What you're going to find is as we define the qualities in the individuals that we go ahead and are wanting to attract, what you, what the board members have just talked about, that will be a quality that we will want to see in the person who we select. So I don't think we need to do that because it, I've always found that it's nice to be able to talk about the vision, mission, the beliefs of the organization, and go right into the strategic plan because they kind of drive what changes you might want to make. So I'm fine if, with what we've covered there. And what I'd like to do right now is just go through, and we don't have to look at strategic plan priorities. I'd like to hear from all board members, basically what you're proud of, what Pope County has accomplished. So maybe if we can start with that. I know one thing, and I know it's, and I like what Mr. Townsend said, we don't need to look at just data, we need to look at kids, not just as data, but, but you did earn a B. And that's where I'm going to go ahead and start that because when we're attracting candidates, that's what they like to see, academic progress. So let me just start with that one, and maybe, Mrs. Cunningham, if we could go around the board members and see one thing that they are proud of.
Yes, sir, of course, and I'll be happy to start off. I'm especially proud of the incredible arts programs throughout our county and the incredible recognition that our arts programs have had throughout our state and nation. I could get you lists of all the different accolades that we've received. I don't have them sitting here in front of me, but we have one of the most progressive counties when it comes to the visual and performing arts in central Florida, and I'm very proud that during lean times, at least while I've been on the board, we've never cut art teachers, art classes, music, science, quite the opposite, we've been able to expand them to rural areas throughout the county. So I'm very proud of that. Who would like to go?
Thank you. I am very proud of our career academies. I know that we have really made a tremendous mark, not just in our school district, but even in the nation. A lot of other school districts are trying to replicate what we have within our school district, and I know that we have really tried to make sure that it's understood that all kids will not go to college and that they do need to have some skills so that when they leave graduating from high school, that they can immediately go to work and, and have certification, and some of them are making more money than many of us are making, which is great. It's what we want. So I, I can't say enough about our career academies and the great job that our staff and our students and their families have done in that, in that arena.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fields. Ms. Reynolds?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have two. So my first one would be that we have an incredible staff at every level. We have people that genuinely care about our students, which I think is probably one of the most important traits in anyone that we hire, is that you genuinely care about the kids. And then my second would be more student-focused and that we offer something for every student. So we have great arts programs, we have great career academies, we have Cambridge and IB, we have great athletics, but there's different opportunities for every student to get involved in that if you're a student, particularly at our high schools, and can't find something to get involved in, we probably need to have a conversation because there are just so many clubs and extracurricular opportunities that there really is something to fit everyone.
Thank you, Ms. Reynolds. Ms. Fortney?
Yeah, I am just always amazed at how our teachers, our bus drivers, our food service, our custodial staff manage to do more with less every single day and build those individual relationships. They know their clientele, they know their community, they, they don't give up no matter the roadblocks that the state or even the district puts in front of them. They give it 110% and that they continue to want to be employed by us, which sometimes amazes me. But the bottom line is, those relationships.
Thank you, Ms. Fortney. Ms. Miller?
I think everybody's mentioned the highlights, definitely our arts program, and we are known for our academies, some of them do amazingly well. I think the one thing that's changed in my history with this district is the community engagement, the parent engagement that we have. In the past, you wouldn't see people show up to meetings or give input, and I will prepare FSBA for that because I've sat through these district searches as community members, when you could count on two hands how many people are in the room. Be prepared for that not to be the case this time. There's a level of transparency that this board has taken on, sometimes not so willingly, but it's happened and it's engaged the community, and I think that's so very important. So I'm proud that our teachers feel like they have a voice and that our community feels like they are well-represented as well. So that's probably what I'm most proud of.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Mr. Wilson?
Well, I, I've said this before, and I'm going to reiterate this. I think that the challenges that we face in education are both structural and systemic. They're structural in the sense that, that our hands are often tied by federal and state law and DOE rules, and there's probably not a lot we can do about that. They're systemic in the sense that we, and education does this in general, we focus on compliance with laws and rules first and then secondarily taking care of people. And I, I think that's something we can change. So that's something that I would look for in a new superintendent, finding someone who understands that systems and processes matter and restructuring our system so that they're first focused on people and then secondarily on, on the laws and rules. And we absolutely should be following the laws and rules, but there's a way to do that so you have greater flexibility, you allow greater creativity to the employees. Having said that, the, the thing that I am most proud of in this district are our people, and I've heard this said by, by my colleagues as well. They can, we have amazing educators in, in this school district and amazing staff and faculty, and they hang in there and they just keep producing in spite of the challenges that they face that are posed on them by, by the many laws and rules. So I, I would say it's people. I, I think we are, I'm very proud of our people, and I would hope that our next superintendent would have that appreciation of, of the staff and faculty here and the community here as well in this district.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Okay, Dr. Vogel? Another. Okay, excuse me, just a minute, we have Mr. Townsend.
Great. Yeah, I would like to echo what, what Lori Lynn and, and Lisa all said. I think, I think they cover three of, three of the, the, the three things I'm particularly proud of, our, our commitment to the, to the arts and to the untested things. I'm very proud of, very proud of the level of engagement that's been brought here, both from the, the public and from the voice of the, the employees, the folks who do the hard work every day. I think we have an incredible voice there that's only getting stronger. And, you know, I, I want to say real quick, real quickly why I'm not proud of the grade of, of the school, school grade, because I think it's important for, for the public to understand, understand this. School grade isn't a grade, it's a score. On, on, on this, there are, there are only, I think, nine Cs in the entire state. We're, 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 we're one of the lower, the, the lower Bs, well, I think we rank 55 out of 67 on the score board. My, my, my reaction to that is not to, not to, to look at our, our people or our community and, and, and see, you know, bad perform, performance, is to look at a system that's rooted in fraud that doesn't take into consideration the humanity of kids and our community or, or the structure of our schools or, or a lot of things. You know, it's, I think it's a mistake to define yourself by someone else's arbitrary score and, and letter. And so I, I just want to make that, that, that point clear, but the, it's, it's the human things about our district that I love and that I'm proud of and, and will go on being proud of. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Townsend, and I will just want to respond. That is one, board members' opinion about the district grade. I, on the other hand, feel that that needs to be included as we move forward to seek a new superintendent. I am very proud of that, and I thank you, Dr. Vogel, for bringing that up. While it was not a measurement that Pope County Public Schools created or one that necessarily everybody supports, it is what is currently out there, and there has been a lot of work. And there has been a lot of work on the academic side to work with our students in order for us to have achieved that ranking in two years in a row. So I, for one, would like to continue to see that as part of what we send out when we do our advertisement as something that we are especially proud of. At least this board member feels that way. Okay, Dr. Vogel?
Thank you very much. I am very excited to hear about these points of pride. And as you said, Ms. Cunningham, I know Rachel is listening. And when she is developing the brochure, many of these points will be in there. And some of our potential applicants will go back and view this. So I think these points really make your district very desirable. I'd like to move now to maybe some unfinished priorities that what, you know, thinking as a new superintendent coming in, what are some of the things that board members would say we need to focus on, maybe in the short term first? And maybe if you could do the round robin like you're doing, because I can't see everybody. And if somebody doesn't have anything, let's find the past. But let's look at unfinished priorities right now.
Okay, Mr. Wilson?
Well, that's easy for me. We have funded a chief operating officer position, and we haven't we haven't filled that position. And you know, it's typical for superintendents to have those particular skills, those the skills of building systems and processes, and then hiring someone else to do who has great interpersonal skills and works with the community. That can't I said it's typical. That's not typical, but that can occur. It's more typical for the superintendent to be the face of the district and to hire someone to manage those systems and processes. But I think it's so so critical to us to address the systemic issues that we have as it relates to how do we how do we better serve our employees? And and to do that, that requires having someone with strong systems and process skills. So I'm I hope we could fill that position and find somebody with those skills, because I think that's going to make a huge difference in the performance of our school district and the way our school district is perceived and the way we deliver education moving forward.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Great recommendation. Ms. Fortney?
Yeah, I really would like to see us consolidate some of our outsourced consulting positions, which cost us huge amounts of money, and start to bring in many experts that we already employ in this district at their classroom level, at their content level, at, you know, involve those people in the decision, not not just the decision making process, but the learning process for peer to peer. And look at some of those consulting. I wish I could have a list of all the consultants we pay and for what. But I would like to see that money given to the folks that actually do the work on the ground. And my second thing is, I would like to see a student board member somehow or a student advisory council that is shared with the board, not just the superintendent having one.
Thank you, Ms. Fortney. So noted. Ms. Miller?
I think my my concerns kind of lie within the position Mr. Wilson discussed. Maybe they do. Maybe it's something different. The two areas that I've seen that I think we need growth in, that we need to continue, we have still not completed an efficiency as far as our budget and finance. We have not done an efficiency review or efficiency search. I've watched superintendents take roles and, you know, make big budget decisions. I would like for someone to have the background in that efficiency management of our budgets. And that might be the role of the position that we have not filled, because that's a great importance to our taxpayers. It's a great importance to the board board who have, you know, kept asking for some kind of review and not review for compliance sake, because I understand that we are very compliant. We have one of the best staff work working on that. I'm talking about efficiency of positions and dollars. That's, I think, the biggest the biggest thing. And the second thing, we do really, we have really grown our professional development as far as, you know, creating principles and looking at those programs. I would like to see the professional development extended. We need to create leaders, even within our district office. A lot of districts, when a superintendent leaves, there's someone right behind to fill that position. I don't know that we offer the development of leadership beyond trying to get a teacher to a AP to a principal. I would like to see a leadership development program, which will include the planning that we've always talked about of succession planning of someone who's missing from their job who will fill in. We have not. That's something that's not it's not recent. It's not the last five years. I don't think we've ever had a business led district base, which is budgeting and and developing leaders. So those are those are my issues.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Ms. Reynolds?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Miller, you stole part of mine with just looking at our professional development. I think our new teacher engagement program has been huge for our new teachers and getting them involved. I've heard great feedback from particularly first, second, third year teachers that feel like they're drowning, that giving them a mentor and give having these programs for them to go to even when they're dog tired after work, that it just reenergizes them. And I think we do really well in training new principals. But that gap between before you're getting to be training for administration or if you want to stay in the classroom for 30 years, because we have teachers that genuinely just want to stay in the classroom. And then at the district level, too, with some of our business support staff, how are we training our auditing team with how are we giving them professional development? How are we doing professional development in HR? Are there ways that we can better support our support programs to make sure that we're preparing them for the future and raising them up so that we're not losing them to Publix or Saddle Creek or some of the businesses around us? Because I do think there's ways to maintain great people here that may not necessarily be tied to dollars, but just to the what you're willing to put into them. And then the other is, I'm a little bit with what Lynn was saying, is filling that COO position. I don't necessarily think that our superintendent, I actually think our superintendent shouldn't be doing the COO position, but to be able to hire someone to do the COO position so that they don't have to focus as so much on the finance and the operations and can focus on our our schools and our kids and from more of the 30 foot level and not the business side of things that they can focus on both the education and the business side of things. So I do think filling that position is crucial moving forward.
Thank you, Ms. Reynolds. Ms. Fields?
Thank you, Ms. Cunningham. I have two two items here. One of them is to continue to diversify our staff at all levels to be a reflection of our student population. I think that we've made some progress, but I think that we need to continue to work towards improving that and and just making sure that it is a reflection of our students in our in our district. And the other item that I have is to improve the public perception of our school district. We've made a lot of progress there, but I think we still need to focus on making sure that we are sharing our stories and that we are praising our own pun and that we are making the community aware of all the things that are possible and all of the opportunities that we have that can be afforded to our students and to their families. And those are my two items.
Thank you, Ms. Fields. And for myself, I would have to agree with several of my colleagues. All of these suggestions are incredible. My two top ones would be to hire our chief operating officer. We talked about that for a long time. And I respect Superintendent Byrd wanting to allow the next superintendent to choose that position. But I hate that we've had to hold off so long. I think it would have been very beneficial had we had somebody on board a while ago. And secondly, something that's really important to me is the diversity piece. When I go in my schools, I when you look at the children, I think it's important for a child to see somebody who looks like them at the school, whether it's their teacher, an administrator, a coach, a bus driver. It's really important for children to see folks that look like them, to inspire them that they can do and be the best that they can be. So I agree with all the other comments, certainly, but those two would be probably two of my important ones, along with going forward with being able to address the strategic plan. I really think it's time that the strategic plan, while it's a roadmap, and we were blessed to be able to create it where it moves from year to year. But I think having the goals, the mission statement, and everything clear for our community and our our employees is critical to know what is mission minded and to be able to move forward as a district, doing the things that we set, the board, along with our superintendent, is the goals and the vision of our district. That is key to me. And so I would look forward to our board being able to do that. Once we have the new superintendent on board or before, whatever the board decides, because I think we need to continue to look at that, evaluate where we are, and then certainly set new targets as we deem appropriate. And once again, it's a living, breathing document. So we do have to revisit it. We normally do each year. And I'll look forward to hopefully setting something up with you before the end of this year, but if not for into next year. So those would be my top three. Thank you, Dr. Vogel?
Want to make sure everybody had an opportunity to to provide that information. And if so, what I'd like to do, I can't tell you how I'm
I'm still here.
Yes, sir. I didn't. I was waiting on you. Yes, sir.
Unmute. There was no no hand up. I'm sorry. Go ahead, Mr. Townsend.
So so does the hand need to be up every time we're doing around around Robin? I will I will. I think around Robin is by definition around Robin. But okay. I think everybody's the question was, what are the short term issues? And I think the number one short term issue by far is is the conflict between capacity and say, safety in dealing with COVID. And there's no way to escape that. I mean, we're what 100 and something instructional positions down. Capacity is a long term problem and it's a short term problem. And it's acute now in the era of COVID. And I think we need to be, you know, we've changed the position on quarantining so that that teachers either are allowed to go back into class after a day or two if they're not. It's unclear exactly what the what the rules are. I think maintaining that balance in some in some way is probably the number one short term issue. And it's not going to going away, because, you know, I think the virus is going to be with her for be with us for a while. Secondarily, related to that, I mean, I don't I don't know how we think we're going to fund a chief operating officer after when 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 the big post post election cuts come. You know, I mean, our own, our own chief finance officers talking about that, I think our a piddly little eight or nine million dollars to 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 put the 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 fund balance up a point is not gonna stem the tide of what's coming. So I mean, those are the two short to middle term pieces of thought that that really need to be be focused on.
Thank you very much. Dr. Vogel?
Thank you very much. I appreciate those last two items, Mr. Townsend. Thank you. And, you know, when I look at all the challenges that are that schools have faced over the years, whatever is put in front of public schools, they're somehow able to go ahead and solve the problem. And I know this COVID issue is something that is still in process in terms of actually how we can deal with it. But everything that I'm hearing is your district is doing as well or better than most districts. And that's really a credit to those people out in the schools and in in your district office. And I think it came what I heard loud and clear and and as being a former superintendent, I when I hear these things, I get all excited. One thing I heard is you have an organization and your people are committed to Polk County. You don't have a compliance organization where people just commit and get their paycheck. I'm hearing that this is an organization of commitment. And whatever people need to do to get the job done, they're going to be there and do it for the students of Polk County. So I just wanted to summarize those two areas there. I'd like to, before we move forward to the roles and responsibilities and relationships, external and internal, I'd like to ask whoever would like to maybe answer this one, where do you see Polk County in in either five or 10 years, if we got it right? If we were able to put everything in place that we wanted to do, just maybe what would how would you see Polk County?
Anyone? Ms. Miller?
Thank you. That's a great question. I think we would like I would like to see Polk County, you know, producing out the outcomes are what's important to me, not graduation. I want kids, students, young adults educated here that come back here, that stay here and be a part of our community to grow. Polk County is growing. It's the in between. If you look at the Tampa Port Authority, we are the Mecca of in between the Tampa and Orlando areas. And we want to create an environment that walks not walks into the door to make the data point of a graduation, but the end result, what is the end result we want for our students? And I think maintaining in the here in the community where we have a buy in for all students, where our business community is concerned with every school from Title One to the private schools, you know, that my child is in, I need to know that we have we are producing outcomes that affect every area of our of our community. And I'd like to see that and be invested in it, invested for the the outcomes, not just not just the graduation. It's beyond that at this point, I think, for a lot of our kids.
Excellent. Thank you.
Great, great comments, Ms. Miller. Ms. Fortney?
Yeah, I would like to see us as a district and a board and a superintendent that is willing to stand up and speak out for our staff and students. I want to be proactive, not reactive. That that's been an issue for me since I was in the classroom. I always felt like it was a reactive a reaction to something that happened, not us having the forethought to solve the problem using the folks that we have as boots on the ground.
Thank you, Ms. Fortney. Ms. Reynolds?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would say, and I think Superintendent Byrd has given us a great launching pad, that having a community that has genuine buy in for our schools, that I think we have a lot of business partners that are starting to see that education is economic development, that when we have great schools, we have people that are wanting to move here. And that when we have great schools and a great, you know, great businesses, that we have students that want to come back here and find a job, similar to what Ms. Miller was saying, that our community really is centered around the educational system within it at all levels, at the elementary level, at the high school level, we see a lot of parent volunteers at elementary, and then we get to the high school level. And I don't know if it's because kids don't think it's cool for their parents to hang out at their school, or if it's parents just feel like their kids are okay by that point. But having the community support at every level and really having that engagement with our community in our schools.
Thank you, Ms. Reynolds. Mr. Townsend?
Yeah, I think a lot of this revolves around what what the overall state model looks like in 10, 10, 10 years. I certainly hope, you know, if you go into an elementary school, I think middle school as well today, but but you you go into an elementary school, you're going to see what what we call a data wall, where every kid is is represented entirely red, red, yellow, green by their data, how they score on tests. I've talked about this before. I would like every school to have a humanity wall where our our kids are assessed by what they need as human beings to develop their their full potential, not not what they can score to 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 throw out to to the world for 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 marketing or whatever. You know, I think the an organization that is built around the human development of kids will be an organization that is able to attract people because people want to do to do that for a living. And I hope that the state model in 10, 10 years is very different and that we're able to have the 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 kind of fully staffed workforce that's all built around advancing the humanity of kids, not 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 just their data. the humanity of kids, not, 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 not just their data.
Thank you. Ms. Fields?
I would like to see us be in a place where all of our students are thriving academically and socially and that our, that the perception of our school district is, is, is much better and that we're able to attract new businesses into our community and our, our economy improves so that we are able to do some, 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 some creative and, and good things with our kids and, and bring the resources back into the school district that we so desperately need to be able to do the things that we always are talking about. So I, I, I just think just really changing the perception in the community and wanting, businesses really wanting to come into our county and into our community and bringing the resources again that we need in order to continue to improve our school district.
Thank you, Ms. Fields. Mr. Wilson?
I, I think that oftentimes, well, not oftentimes, pretty much, in every case, we, we, we have challenges and situations wherein our leadership's hands are tied. They're restricted considerably in what they can do in addressing any particular problem. And, and people become frustrated and they lash out at individuals as opposed to understanding that there's a, there's a system in place that's creating those problems. And this goes back to both what Ms. Fortney and Mr. Townsend have talked about, bringing in the human touch, the human side, the human element. And that's done by addressing systems to ensure that people, that leaders have the flexibility and the creativity to address issues and challenges. And they're not, they're not constrained by the systems that are currently in place. So my vision would be fixing that so that we, we do have, you know, so that we allow leaders to make the decisions that they're, they're certainly capable of making, they just are constrained in making those choices. Because ultimately, that leads to a lot of finger pointing, a lot of blaming, and that doesn't help. It doesn't move, you know, our district forward. It doesn't make things better. So we, we need to address that and make sure that folks have the ability to, to, to make, to be proactive and to make those kinds of decisions that will make our, our school district a better district.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. And I have a few thoughts as well. One of the things to me, as I've gone through my careers, that I've learned is education is economic development. And I've seen it firsthand in our county. So you ask, where would I see Polk County in five, maybe to 10 years? I would like to see us have the opportunity to graduate students that go on either into the workforce, obviously, or to some post-secondary institution, whether it be a career academy like a Valencia, or go on to college. Not everybody is college material. And that's why I think our various career academies that we offer provide opportunities for students to get certificates in a variety of different fields. So continuing to expand that, to be able to allow children a lot of different options to me is very huge. Additionally, I would like to see our communities work with us, to support us. Because oftentimes, when a new business approaches Polk County and says, hey, we have this new technology, we're going to need workers and folks that know how to use it, know how to use the machinery, know how to use the technology, that they partner with us in some of our career schools to be able to do that. Because ultimately, as I used to tell my leadership classes, I want you to go out, get the best possible education wherever that is, but don't forget where your roots are. Come back to Polk County. We need mechanics. We need plumbers. We need drivers. We need educators. We need physicians. We need chiropractors. We need attorneys. We need accountants. You name it, Polk County needs it. And I often see where a lot of kids leave Polk County to get their education and then leave even the state of Florida to find employment. And it would be so great for our school district to be a springboard, to allow kids to get their education, but then bring them back into Polk County with whatever education they got in order to be able to start their roots and their family here to continue it and be a contributing member of Polk County Society rather than perhaps in another county or another state. So that's near and dear to my heart. And I would like to see that in the next five to 10 years as Polk County increases the diversity and the type of businesses that we attract. But then we also have to have the students prepared to enter those fields for employment. Anyone else? Okay, Dr. Vogel?
I want to tell you outstanding comments. And, you know, I frequently drive between West Coast and Central Florida. And Polk County is so vibrant. When I drive on Polk Parkway or I-4, I continue to see new businesses opening, you know. And I, I really, anybody who watches this, who is a prospective applicant, is going to be very excited about the potential here. So thank you very much for that discussion. We'd like to move now and talk about external relationships on our agenda here. And maybe I would start, these are important relationships that school boards have. And I'd maybe start, and I'll combine the first, congressional and legislative delegations. We talked a little bit about sometimes we get directives and we don't have any choice. We have to follow these rules. Maybe you can talk a bit about the relationships that you have with the congressional delegation and Florida legislators. I mean, how, how does that work in your district?
Okay, Ms. Reynolds?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think we each have our own individual relationships with legislative delegations and congressional delegations. But as a board, we do not have, we've done, we've tried a couple times meeting all together, but we tend to go more for our individual meetings. I know I have a, a couple legislators and a couple senators and that I call anytime there's something going on. I have a couple that will call me and say, hey, this is coming up tomorrow. What do you know about it? How is it going to affect Polk County, which is obviously what we want? And we, you know, I every year go with the Winter Haven Chamber President up to Tallahassee during session where we can talk to, to our legislators about how Winter Haven schools need education, but how education is economic development and how the decisions they're making in education are affecting not only our schools, but are also affecting the businesses in Winter Haven at all levels. So I think it's really at this point, board member by board member for our relationships.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Reynolds. Ms. Miller?
Thanks. I'll agree with Ms. Reynolds that some of us had relationships with different delegation members before we were board members, and we've continued those. And they're very different. I'm assuming that you're talking about what we look for in the, the superintendent's role or what our district's role would be?
What I'm looking for really is, is that a relationship that needs to be strengthened? For example, if we're recruiting a superintendent, is that an ongoing positive relationship with a legislative delegation? If there are educational issues, do you have someone you can call? Are they listening to you? You know, that type of thing. We're looking really more to hear about your relationship. Is that a positive one? Is it one that needs to be improved? I'm hearing it's individual. Is there a, for example, a legislative program that Polk County has every year that they submit or they use the FSAB program? That's the kind of information. And not every board member has to respond on it. I just want to open that up just to get a general feel.
I just, and we do have somewhat of a relationship. I would like to see, I think Ms., somebody's mentioned this. I would like to see a superintendent and, and/or appointed staff have a direct role with local, state, and federal. And as an advocate, and I know this is, everybody is an advocate for public education, but I think there's a respect given to people, even when I have to walk into a meeting with a delegation member that I do not agree with certain legislation or policy that's, that we're discussing. I think we need to have a superintendent who's okay and feels comfortable in the role of education advocate. And there's a way to do that with, with our delegation even federally. But an active role in that, I think, would help. Because we keep talking to the, you know, Mr. Wilson mentions multiple times and, and the rest of us, you know, our reaction to what's happening to us. I would like to see the role of top administration being more, and I haven't seen this around the state, so this may be just, you know, pie in the sky. But I would like to see a more active relationship with the individuals themselves in local and state and federal delegation.
Thank you, Ms. Miller.
That's the, a comment that's very good because what we're doing here, so I'm making a note that the superintendent's going to have to have that ability to go ahead and build that relationships, moving the relationship maybe to more, from reactive to more proactive. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Townsend?
Some folks may find this a little, a little surprising coming from me, but I, I think the superintendent should have a, a good, a good professional working relationship with the, the legislature. Yeah, we all, all of that. I think the, the pressure that needs to be brought to bear should come from the elected board. I mean, I think that's the, now, I also think it's extremely important, and, and, and I will emphasize this, it's really important for the superintendent to be honest about what policies, behaviors from Tallahassee mean on the ground. I, I, I think we're too often willing to thank people for things that do not, should not be thanked for. And I, I think there's, there's an important honesty there. But, but I think criticism, pressure is a, is a political function that, that the elected board should engage in. And, and I, I think last, lastly, in a lot of ways, there are, are individual relationships with legislators or board, relationship is really irrelevant. I mean, it's, it's the outcomes that matter. And the outcomes are driven by our local legislators' attention to their leadership in Tallahassee and what they're told, told to do. They're much more interested in what they're telling them to do than what we are. And that's, that's, that's just a fact of life. So, I mean, good, good relationships, bad, bad relationships don't actually matter much to the overall, to the overall structure of things.
Okay, Ms. Fields?
Thank you. I would pretty much agree with Ms. Reynolds. However, in prior years, I think we have had a better working relationship as a board. We have had meetings with the county elected officials, and we've also had meetings with our legislative delegation as well. And I, I, I know that we have a Wendy Dodge who is employed, and she does a lot of the behind the scene work in establishing relationships with the legislators and with the local county officials as well. I, I think that it's important for the superintendent to have a presence and to have a relationship as well. And I think it's also important that each individual board member have a relationship. And I think we all do in our own way.
That's excellent.
Thank you, Ms. Fields. Mm-hmm. Go ahead, Dr. Vogel.
Want to see any more board comments?
Yes, yes, yes. Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, so I agree with, with Ms. Fields. We probably have one of the top legislative liaisons in, in the state, and she's excellent at what she does. But she's involved with the nuts and bolts stuff, the, the everyday grind. And I think it's important for, I do believe it's important for the superintendent to have those personal relationships because the reality is the folks that go to Tallahassee have their own areas of expertise, and they're typically not in education. So having a relationship with those folks and sharing with them the challenges that we face in education at the local level helps to inform them. And I think that's incredibly important because otherwise they have no platform from which to make decisions. So having the superintendent build those relationships and, and help inform and educate those folks in Tallahassee who don't otherwise have that background and experience, I think is incredibly important.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Ms. Fortney?
Yeah, Mr. Wilson pretty much said what I was going to say, but I, I also want to make sure that we're looking for a leader that is just not the deliverer of bad news. And again, I'm going to go back to being proactive, not reactive, and sharing how that, for example, the FRS cut, how that really does affect our staff and students.
Thank you, Ms. Fortney. And I want to add a few comments as well. I think that, wait a minute, we have another hand up. Hang on. Mr. Townsend?
Yeah, just very briefly, I, I wanted to agree with, with, with Mrs. Fields and just add a, a point, like, there's a difference between peer government relationships, like, like city, city commissions. And I think all of us have prioritized having very good local peer relate relationships. That's a sort of a different relationship than, than the power relationship in Tallahassee. And we definitely need a superintendent who's committed to working collaboratively with city managers and, and, and the county, county, county commission and all that. Because I'm actually really proud of, of the, the, the level of, of collaborative work we've done with, with peer governments.
Thank you, Mr. Townsend. And I just wanted to say that I think, as many of my colleagues have mentioned, that we each have individual relationships with our state representatives, state senators, congressmen, and so forth. And I think something that was really important to me that we used to do is to have gatherings with not only our county commissioners, but our state delegation as well. And to that end, back in February, I scheduled that to happen in the October timeframe this year. It was one of my goals as becoming chair, that we would reinstitute that because I thought so much information was shared. Once again, you're building those relationships one by one. And we were able to talk about things that involved not only the school board, but our county government. And so I'm hoping to do that. I'm not sure that it's going to happen in October because everything kind of got changed with COVID, but it would be one of my goals to ask for next year that we definitely try to meet again because I think those face-to-face meetings build relationships, they build discussion, we're able to talk about issues one-on-one. And I personally feel that that's very important, as well as it's important for our superintendent to continue to have that. I know that Superintendent Bird has done an awesome job as best as she can with all the other responsibilities she holds. So I would like to see that continue. And I do feel that that's a critical part of a new superintendent's role, is maintaining those relationships in our county as well as with our state. Okay, Dr. Vogel?
Thank you very much. And this is an excellent transition because the next items are relationships with municipalities and the county government. And I know you have different communities, and, and the school board touches every one of those communities in some way, and also with the county. So how is that relationship going? I got, I think Mr. Townsend started it off saying, it seems like it's going well. And it's always a challenge when there are a number of cities in a, in a county. So maybe talk about that a little bit.
Okay, I guess I'll start. We have 17 different municipalities in Polk County. So we do touch a lot of different communities and, but we're united by one county government and then several different municipalities for the city governments scattered throughout Polk County. So once again, I feel like we have pretty good relationships. I think maybe each of us in our own district knows our particular government officials. And I think they do a great job in working with us and, and trying to do the best that they can to support our district and our schools. So I'm very pleased in what I've seen in our local county government as well as our municipalities. And then we'll talk about chambers when we get down to that next. Ms. Fields?
I would just agree with Ms. Cunningham. I think we have amazing relationships throughout our county. And I would have to commend our superintendent of schools, Ms. Bird, as well, for working real hard to, to maintain and to establish relationships. And I, I don't think there would be any city governance that would not want to help us if we were to seek assistance. I really think that they really, they have really been supportive and they really value and understand the work that we do, and they want to see a difference in the community. So I would say, I think we have. So I would say, I think we have an excellent relationship within our county. And I'm very proud of that.
Thank you, Ms. Fields. Ms. Miller?
I just want to reiterate the large size of this county. And while I think we all have great relationships, some of us cover two cities. I cover a very rural area, others have that as well. And this all can't be on the superintendent. So I'd hope we would find a superintendent that could build a team that would be more, you know, if it's regionally or I would like to see more of it, more of our top administrative staff. It cannot be the super because you'd have to clone that person because of the size of this county. But real buy-in from that cabinet into the different communities. Because some that, you know, we might have individual relationships with, they don't, they feel disconnected from the Bartow office because it's so far away. So I would say someone who can delegate those, because I'm assuming it would need to be delegated to cabinet members or someone besides themselves or including themselves, not just to be in the largest municipality we have, which is hard to do because Lakeland alone would keep you busy, but really be in those communities in the Auburndale, the Davenport area, which is like another county all to itself sometimes with the growth. So I think we have a great relationship going. I would like to see, I would like to build on those relationships and not just once a quarter to give a budget report that looks sad, but like build meaningful relationships with the different municipalities, just from that office itself.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. And something that I just thought of too, was the incredible relationship that we have with law enforcement. Sheriff Grady Judd is one of our finest supporters of Polk County Public Schools. And realizing when we have had law enforcement events in remote areas, I can speak basically to those in my district, the law enforcement that has come out from area municipal police departments, along with our sheriff's department, is second to none. So I believe that a lot of the law enforcement areas have worked so well together with us and supported our schools. And we're so very blessed to have that relationship with the sheriff and all the other municipal Polk County police departments. Dr. Vogel?
Yes, I'm going to add that to our agenda for the next one, but I am really glad to hear that. That is critical. I think I read somewhere where Grady Judd is a graduate of Polk County Schools, too.
Yes, sir, he is.
That's excellent. Well, thank you for bringing that up. And maybe we can combine the economic development in the chamber. We actually have talked about that a little bit, but let's, how is that relationship with economic development? If a new business is coming in or the school's involved, I think we already pretty much talked about that, but if you might want to expand on that.
Ms. Reynolds?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I mentioned before when we were talking about our legislative relationships that, you know, for example, the Winter Haven Chamber president will go to Tallahassee with us and really explain to our legislature why it's important for, sorry, Kay, is your mic open? Kay, is your mic open? Thank you. And why that's important for, why education is important for economic development. I know the superintendent serves on the Lakeland's Chamber Board, Mr. Hill, our deputy superintendent, serves on the Winter Haven Chamber Board. And there, I think every board that involves economic development, Central Florida Development Council, we have great relationships, I think, from the school district as a whole with our business partners.
Right.
I would have to echo what Ms. Reynolds has said, having worked with all the different municipalities and all the different chambers across Polk County. I believe we have good working relationships with the folks in there as well as the business community, quite frankly, that supports each of those chambers. Because I think all of them do understand my famous tagline that education is economic development. I believe the business community understands that and supports that. So I think we have to continue working with our chambers and the business community that are members of the chamber, and also our economic development agencies. I know in Haynes City, we have a wonderful Haynes City Economic Development Council that works tirelessly to bring new businesses into the area. So I think as we all work together, we're going to continue to have our areas prosper and grow. And we have to provide the best rigorous education for our kids so that they'll be able to step into the positions that we now serve. So I think we do have great relationships, but of course, they can always be improved. Ms. Reynolds?
Okay. I just wanted to add one more thing with our academies. Our career academies have great support from our local businesses. Our chambers and economic development teams are all invited to serve on the district-wide academy advisory board, and most of them do. And so they make sure to when new businesses are coming into town, to see how can we plug them into our school. If we have a new manufacturing company, okay, what school is there, a manufacturing academy or construction academy? And how can we plug in that business to make sure that they're not only engaged with the district as a whole, but they're specifically engaged with the students that could one day be their employees?
Thank you, Ms. Reynolds. Mr. Townsend?
Yeah, I think, sort of echo what everybody else has said, but with one additional caveat, I think it to some degree, it depends on the economic development organization. A lot of them, they're not all of one ideological point of view about public schools. Some of them are more supportive of the concept than others. I think, I think the chambers certainly tend to be very supportive, but I think there's a, the new superintendent, there are some complexities to be managed between the way the different economic organizations operate, both in, you know, in different cities and different parts of the county. Just a thing to be aware of.
Thank you, Mr. Townsend. Anyone else? Dr. Vogel?
Do you have a state of the school district event or something where you can go ahead and talk about some of these amazing things that you all are doing every year, where some of the business people can come and hear about all these successes that you have?
Ms. Reynolds?
So there was actually one scheduled for April 30th, which of course got canceled because of COVID. So previously, we have Polk Vision, which is a community convener. And they previously have done a state of the county, a state of, a state of the county really with the county commission as far as where the county is. So they had this year invited the superintendent to also do a state of the schools at the same time, which was all set up and ready to go. And as they started to advertise it in early March, it of course got canceled. But that is something that they're working to continue to do for in the years to come.
Thank you, Ms. Reynolds. Dr. Vogel?
I think that's excellent. And I really like hearing that the county commission asked that the school board participate in that, too. I think that's very powerful. So I'm hoping that that will be something we can get back on the agenda, or maybe we might even have to have it by Zoom. The next we had is a relationship with faith-based communities, faith-based. Maybe we can comment on that a little bit, then we'll move to internal.
Okay, Ms. Reynolds?
Sorry, I spend a lot of time in the community. But so we have some great, particularly some of our local churches that have taken to adopting our schools, whether it's we're going to come and volunteer at their carnivals or support our teachers and take them breakfast for Teacher Appreciation Week. I would say the majority of our schools have a partnership with a faith-based organization, some of them multiple faith-based organizations. I know Christ Community Church this year in Winter Haven adopted Garden Grove and they had a program where they, their church community adopted each of the teachers at Garden Grove. And it was, you know, once a month, send them an encouraging note or something that, pencils for their classroom, things like that. But I think our community really, particularly a faith-based community rallies around how they can support the schools that are across the street from them or in their neighborhood.
Thank you, Ms. Reynolds. Ms. Miller?
I first want to talk about my hometown of Winter Haven. Sarah gets to represent. They, the business community and the faith-based in the community have really stepped in toward a lot of those schools. I can't say that for the whole district. I think people have good intention. I get a lot of questions on how do I do it? What can I do? Who do I reach out to? And I know Ms. Reynolds, as well as myself, COVID kind of got in the way. We had shared some information with the superintendent about a faith-based kind of committee Orange County had done, just to kind of gather all the leaders from all the different communities together to kind of give them ideas, whether it's sending the notes, like she said, just being a part of the schools. Because I can think of a few of my schools that I've asked outright elementary schools if they have that support and they don't. And I know churches are willing to do it, but we need that connector. So that's something I would like to see the next superintendent without COVID be able to kind of initiate, is bringing those groups in, number one, for inclusiveness, to have all the groups involved and not just certain members or certain individual churches. And then giving them direction on how to do it. There's a lot of red tape when you start wanting to do and volunteer. And I think that keeps some of our faith-based organizations away. They're not sure how. So I would like to see a superintendent with that, with one of those, you know, as an initiative to kind of, to kind of gather all those people together. And we could use some of the Winter Haven churches as, you know, an idea of how to start it or what to do.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Ms. Fields?
I would say that there are certain pockets of the county where it's probably much more participation from the faith-based organization and others. I think that a lot of the faith-based organizations are involved within the schools, but we might not be aware. It might not be anything that's publicized. I think that we could definitely do a better job in that area. I know that the churches want to help. I think, as Ms. Miller just said, they might not know how to get involved. And I think we just need to probably do a better job in that area and making sure that we have a presence, especially as it relates to the different opportunities to participate in events and services at the, at the different churches throughout the county and the community, and not just one person being able to do that. Because you can only do so much.
Thank you, Ms. Fields. Mr. Townsend?
Yeah, I mean, my, my experience is that the religious community is very involved. I think a big part of that is the overlap between congregations and employees. I mean, if you, if you go and we have a, I think, a very, very strong religious presence among our staff, you know, there's a lot of, I think a lot of connections happen that way. They happen pretty organically and early with kids as well. You know, I have found that churches are among the most interested places in hearing somebody talk, 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 talk about schools. And that's a wide range of sort of, of political and ideological bases. You know, I think no matter where you come down on the spectrum there, you know, churches are in the business of humanity. And I think there's a natural connection with schools. I think that's actually a real strength for us.
Thank you. Mr. Townsend. Ms. Fortney?
Yeah, I want to echo what Mr. Townsend and Ms. Miller said. And I think it also boils down to the individuals that are employed at our schools. And I'm going to keep using Danny Higgins as an example, because she is the boots on the ground that makes that happen. Same thing for Ashberry right here in Bartow. I know Stan Ball has a relationship with the church right next door. So it is happening, but it's, I agree with Ms. Fields, almost in pockets. And we need to get that fixed.
Thank you, Ms. Fortney. And I would have to agree. I know in my district, there's quite a few churches that support the schools, whether they help with the backpacks for food on weekends, whether they provide school shirts, clothing, supplies, the beginning of school. There are so many that are so actively involved, but I can see where if someone didn't know, if we could have a better system of getting the word out perhaps on maybe a school that would need to be adopted by a church or a faith-based organization. I know that would be so helpful to a lot of our students and families. So certainly something, as my colleagues have just said, would be an area that we could improve upon certainly for the benefit of our kids. Anyone else? Okay. Dr. Vogel?
Thank you. We're moving right along here. We're actually ahead of schedule, which is always good. Now let's talk about internal relationships. Let's start with administrative staff. I believe you have an administrative association of sorts. Maybe you can talk a bit about that relationship or administrative relations.
Okay, who would like to address that? Do you have anybody? Okay, if not, I'll start. We do have a organization of retired administrators in Polk County that is very active. They are very supportive of our community, our schools, and our superintendent. And we also have the opportunity where our administrative staff has opportunities to meet together with the rest of our cabinet, to be able to talk about issues and things that they want addressed in our schools. So we need to continue to have those opportunities where administrators can talk freely and be able to discuss issues and things that they have at their schools with one another. Because as we all know, nobody wants to reinvent the wheel. We need to look to the expertise of those who possibly have more years and can provide some input and some help, or possibly just brainstorm for creative ways to deal with things, especially now during what we have going on. Let's see. Ms. Miller?
I have two areas of focus, Dr. Vogel. One, internally with administrative staff, I would like to see leadership that promotes communication with board. You know, there's a level of trust that needs to be created with a new superintendent or any superintendent and her board members. But having administrator, having a professional at that level support open communication and supportive working environment for the staff and administrators at the district level and at the schools to be able to feel, you know, comfortable with speaking to a board member or being involved at a certain level. I would like, I would like to see that. That's something I think we could definitely improve on. As far as the superintendent's role within the district administrative staff, our district is so broad and we're so spread out with our staff members. I'm looking forward to the survey to see how we can, you know, either continue what's been happening or improve the relations between that office and the actual district staff members that are working in not only the Floral Avenue office, but several offices around the county.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Mr. Townsend?
This will just be sort of, I'll make sort of a general comment that I think will apply to all the subsequent parts of these. I mean, I think it's, we have a culture as a district. I think this is common for a lot of Florida districts. That's very much a chain of command. You know, Ms. Miller referred to a communication issue. I mean, in general, our administrators aren't really allowed to talk to us. I mean, there's a lot of, as board, 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 board members. And I just think that's kind of a, an antiquated way to do business. I mean, I am employed by a very large professional services firm and there's a kind of collaborative developmental frankness that is encouraged. And in a lot of ways, the demand, it's not really a top-down kind of alter where you take orders and you, and you snap, snap to attention kind of, kind of thing. And I think some of the growing pains of the last few years have been related to how to adjust that alter from a kind of chain of command, almost paramilitary sort of structure to something that's more akin to a collaborative knowledge or organization. And I think that clouds the relationships because it's hard to know who's telling you the truth. And, and a lot of times, truth is punished. And I think it's incredibly important to have a superintendent who thinks of power in a very constructive way, who is comfortable with hearing the truth from people and addressing it, and who is also comfortable with truth being shared with the elected board as, as a whole. I think that's just very, very important. And that'll kind of be my comments for the whole, this whole series of, of internal relationship things.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Townsend. Ms. Fields?
I know that we have a principals group that meet on a regular basis. And I know that it's important that they feel like they will have some type of input in the process. And I noticed that there were two groups that were And I noticed that there were two groups that were mentioned, the union, the PEA and ASME, but I don't remember seeing that one on there. And I had meant to mention that earlier, that we really need to make sure that the, I think it's ASPA, I think. I'm not really sure of the correct pronunciation of that group. But I think that they really need to be at the table and they need to have some input because they're going to be working directly with the superintendent of schools. I think that the the need to have an open line of communication is going to be very critical. I think that the need to have trust build is going to be critical as well. And I think that everyone needs to hopefully understand that everything should be done in decency and in order. And I don't think that it's a matter of of not being able to speak to people because I know I'm able to speak to a leadership. But I think it's making sure that the line does not get crossed and that everyone knows where their directions come from. And I think that's one of, that's been, in my opinion, one of the biggest challenges that we've had over the last few years. It's just making sure that there's no confusion on who give directions and how directions should be handled and taken care of and respecting everybody's opinion and in understanding at the end of the day, when it comes to personnel, that the superintendent is ultimately responsible for the hiring and for the overall direction of the staff.
Thank you, Ms. Fields. Ms. Fortney?
Yeah. And I I just want to kind of share, I would never share names, but I have been unpleasantly shocked at the number of administrators that do not feel supported by the district. And I just wanted to get that out for Dr. Vogel. It's all not, it's not a bunch of roses for some folks, depending on your school, I guess. But I just wanted him to be aware that I feel like it needs to come from that open line of communication and then being able to have the decisions made in the middle, like from down up and from up down, if that makes any sense.
Thank you, Ms. Fortney. Mr. Wilson?
Well, I would just like to echo what Ms. Cunningham said. We do have those professional relationships in place. So the systems are in place and and they're very supportive of our district. You know, is there is there an opportunity to improve? There always is, of course. But I think those relationships and but those, the systems themselves are in place. And I think that we just need to continue to nurture those systems and build those systems.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. And I do want to add a couple of remarks after listening to several colleagues. I think someplace that we have gone awry as a board is not knowing where that very fine line is between the responsibility of a board member and a responsibility of a superintendent, you know, or an administrator in a school. And I think it's very clear to me, having been on the board a few years, that it is very important that that line not be crossed. And I think sometimes if we attempt to cross that line and direct an administrator or direct a staff member to do something, that is not our job. And so as we move forward, Dr. Vogel, I'm going to look to make sure that there is some training put in place as the new superintendent comes on board, where some of those roles and responsibilities of board members versus superintendent and staff can be clearly defined. Because we've had several times that that line has totally been crossed inappropriately. And we need to make sure going forward that everybody's on the same level playing field and that everybody understands where that line is. Mr. Townsend?
Could you give an example of those times?
I don't think this is the appropriate time to do that, but it's happened many a times. Thank you.
Yes, that's what I thought. Secondly, I want to just to clarify one thing. When I made a reference to people not being able to talk to us, I was referring to staff reaching out to us, but the elected board to speak to us, not not the ability to speak of a board to speak to a leadership. I think I think Ms. Field must have misunderstood what I'm saying. You know, I mean, there just aren't examples of board, board members that I'm aware of giving orders to administrators. There just aren't. There might have been some public critiques of behavior, but there just isn't any example of somebody, at least at least that I'm aware of, of someone saying, go do this now, or do this, or you're fired, or it just didn't happen. So I just, for the, for the record, I'm certainly not aware of anything like like that.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Vogel?
Thank you. One thing I did hear is maybe with the additional time that we have for input, for staff input, I heard a suggestion that we might want to engage the administrative group also. If that's something that the board would like us to add to our staff involvement piece?
Yes, sir, I believe so.
Excellent. We'll go ahead and build that in. Moving to teaching staff, I've had an opportunity to talk with Stephanie Yocum. I've been very impressed with her enthusiasm. And in fact, we had already set up a Zoom conference for for teachers and other staff to participate, which we'll go ahead and probably push back. But a relationship with the teaching staff and maybe a teacher's association, maybe board members would like to comment on that.
Okay, who would like to comment on that? Ms. Fortney?
Dr. Vogel, that is an absolute must because without staff, without teachers, paras, secretaries, we would not survive. So I'm all for that.
Thank you, Ms. Fields?
I would agree with what Ms. Fortney just said. I think that is just automatically understood that the superintendent must have a good relationship with the with the teachers and with the with the PEA group as well. So I mean, at the end of the day, we are all about building and making sure that we have the best educators and the best teachers in place for our kids. And we want to make sure that we have a good relationship, a trusting relationship and that and that stems and that starts from the from the leader of the school district.
Thank you, Ms. Fields. Mr. Townsend?
I think we have made tremendous progress on this until COVID. I think COVID puts an enormous strain on on everything. I mean, the entire brick and mortar model of education in Florida runs on coercion from 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 the state down. And that's going to put great strain on labor and 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 management relations. I'm not really sure what the fix is to it, but I but I think it's inevitable that 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 there's a lot of strain now. So anyway, that's that's what I would say. I think prior to that, things were, I mean, when I came on the board, this was, this board was at an impasse for a year. And we managed to, I mean, practically at an impasse for a year. And we managed to rebuild that and build a collaborative relationship. So it's just COVID affects a lot of things.
Thank you. Ms. Reynolds?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would say Superintendent Bird has done a great job at, I think, healing some of the relationships across the district and across the community as a whole. That it's exciting to be at events and, you know, when you go to the Academy Showcase every year, teachers are running up to see Ms. Bird and to make sure they get a picture with her and can show them the new cool thing that they're doing. Our teachers know who she is, which I don't know that in every district, the teachers, not only do they know who the superintendent is, but have genuine relationships with them, where Superintendent Bird can tell you most teachers that we pass by on walks, what they teach. And a fun fact about them, which I've always thought is really a unique trait that she's brought to Polk County. But I would say not just the teachers, and I think this is the next line, but the support staff as well, just having those individual relationships and and being willing to to go and ride a bus with them and to to see what they're really doing in the trenches and help out. And I know I've done a couple of walks with Superintendent Bird that we've lost her in a kindergarten classroom because that's where her heart is. And I think just having them, having a superintendent that's willing to go into the trenches and create relationships with the teachers and and all of our staff is crucial.
Thank you, Ms. Reynolds. Mr. Wilson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I agree with Ms. Fields. I think it's incredibly important for the superintendent to build relationships with 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 our teachers, of course, and with our employees and staff. But very important to do so with with our unions, the PEA and ASME because, you know, it's inherent with between a school district and a union that there's always some tension. That's just going to be a fact of life. But to the extent that there are positive relationships, when we have those special challenges, we can work together and solve problems. And we've done that at times, and I think that's been very productive. When that relationship doesn't exist, it tends to devolve into escalated frustrations and things tend to break down. So I think that's an important relationship. Those are important relationships to build.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. And I would have to agree with my colleagues as well. It's very important that we continue to build the relationships with all of our employee groups in order to work together. Because obviously, when more people are sitting around a table, working on a solution to a problem, the more ideas, the more genuine, and the more information that can be expressed, and the quicker a solution can be found. So I believe we all support that. Mr. Dr. Vogel?
Thank you very much. I also had a very good conversation with Mr. Milhorne, also with ASME. And they're willing, very willing to have set up some community or group sessions for us to get input. I also believe, like what you've said, that if there are issues there with people sitting around the table, there's always a way to come up with something that's mutually beneficial for all parties. I know that that's an important characteristic of a superintendent to be able to do that. The next is parents and guardians. Relationships with the parents and guardians, maybe through your advisory committees or other methods that you have. Maybe you can talk about that for a few minutes.
School board members, anybody want to start with comments? Mr. Townsend?
Yeah, I mean, I think this begins and ends with constituent service as as board, board members. There are a number of, I mean, I think there's different philosophies on how, you know, helping parents navigate a very, very, very complex system is. You know, I think, I think you've heard that there's some disagreement in whether helping parents is actually crossing the line or some something like that. You know, I think the, what I have found is that when a parent has an issue and they find people that are responsive and address that that issue, then we have earned a supporter, a booster for a very long time. And I think that's extremely important. And I would, I would, I would encourage any superintendent to welcome that on behalf of their board members because it's a it's a force multiplier that's much, much better than any PR story. You know, an actual, real, lived experience is 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 important. And that's how you build loyalty and support.
Thank you, Mr. Townsend. Ms. Fields?
I would say that that is critical, that the superintendent has a trusting relationship with the with the families, with the parents, guardians, because they entrust us with their children every day. And we need to make sure that they can can feel confident that they have a leader and her team or his team, whoever we decide to select as our superintendent, that's going to ultimately be wanting to do what's best for the students, what's the best for their children. So I think it's critical.
Thank you. Ms. Miller?
I agree. I think coming from an advocacy role, parents want a leader that's going to bring them solutions. And teachers, I mean, just in general, that executive skill of solution finding and not defensive kind of responses. And I'm not, this is not accusatory, I'm just saying what we need to look at in the next leader. We need to find, we need that person that can have the open conversation to talk about things that may be going wrong and how we're going to approve them and to validate what that parent or community member is experiencing. And that's hard to do. And and it is much better to do that than to try to put out a story of how things are shiny when you have either one or a group of people who may not see it so shiny. So I think finding a solutions-based executive leader who will validate what community members and or parents or grandparents are dealing with and involve them in the solution, I think that's a successful trait that that we need to seek.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. And I would have to agree with all my colleagues. I think the most important person that has to be involved in a child's education is certainly their parents or guardians. And I know each of our families is on a different journey when it comes to the education of their kids. And especially in these crazy, trying times that we're in now, we have to offer some love, kindness, flexibility, you name it, because nothing is perfect right now in the classroom. So yes, I feel that the component of the the parent or guardian is critical to the success of our schools. And I know that most parents want to support. They want to be a part of it and they want to help out. Sometimes they just don't know how to do so. So hopefully, we're able to continue the parental groups that we have around the county that help our children. And for some schools that may not be as strong with business or family support, that maybe we'll be able to offer some solutions as we move forward. Because it is, to me, the most critical piece in a child's education is the support that they get at home. Dr. Vogel?
Yes. Do you have an active district advisory council? Or do you have PTAs or that kind of involvement also? Excellent.
Yes, sir. All of the above. Yes, sir, we do. Ms. Miller, did you want to speak to that?
Yeah, we do. We actually, the district advisory council is very useful as it's a representation usually of each school, SAT committee that sends someone. But we have other groups as well. You haven't, we have encouraged and promoted, I'm not going to say it's because I was elected, but since my tenure, we have an ESC advisory that is an actual meeting body that that works with superintendent staff on issues in the in the community. So that's an important voice as well. There's several community groups. I think we have, we've done better than other districts with that. We don't have a lot of advocacy groups in Polk County, like you would see in South Florida or Orange County. You don't have a lot of nonprofit advocacy here. Sometimes I think it would be good if we did. But just to help us, you know, build out from issues, I don't know any. You know, really, it's just different community pockets that have representation. But I would encourage meeting with all of those district advisories.
Excellent.
Thank you. Dr. Vogel?
Thank you. Regarding students, I believe, what is your kind of relationship with students in terms of communication with them? Do you have a student advisory group? Or how does that work? And how does the board deal with relationships with students?
Ms. Reynolds?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And the board as a whole does not have a student advisory group, that I know of at least. Other board members may. But the superintendent does have an advisory group that she utilizes every year that's juniors and seniors. Additionally, we use students a lot of times for our ambassadors, all of our, particularly at our high school level. We have ambassadors for all of our academies. Those students are also used for the academies as part of the academy advisory board. They'll come and present what they're doing in their academy, but they also serve as voting members at the academy meetings where they present in as we're making decisions about academies.
Thank you. Ms. Miller?
I learned of the student advisory to the superintendent at one of these meetings. So I appreciate given, being given the opportunity. I have four school, high schools, five, if you count the center school altogether. And I've asked all of them to have someone represent them. And I think it's important that we represent the entire district. I did not know of that advisory. I think it's an excellent idea. I know during my I know during my campaign, we, I was, I was approached from a few students, very active in Bartow, that want to have more of a student role like some of the other districts have with the board, almost an advisory to the board, which I think is great and I would promote. So I look forward to growing that area with student involvement.
Thank you. Ms. Fortney?
Yes, if you go back to that same work session when I asked that original question, I truly do want a board advisory.
Thank you, Ms. Fortney. And yeah, I would echo the same thing. I know that we not only have the student advisory council that the superintendent has, and she meets usually with them monthly throughout the school year. We also use a lot of our kids for a lot of the events that we have. For example, at our end of the year Hall of Fame banquet, we always have students that emcee it and help out with that. At our Teacher of the Year banquet, it is all completely, almost completely run by students. So I think we've gone, our public relations department has done an incredible job of reaching out to our local schools to find talent throughout Polk County that is able to help us put on some of the coolest events, whereas in the past, those used to be run by board members and staff. So I would hope that we could continue to do that, to showcase our kids and their talent. Mr. Townsend?
Yeah, I think the, I think one of the things I'm hearing, and it dovetails with my, my experience, is there's a lot of engagement with kids. I, I talk to a lot of them all the time. But there isn't a lot of organization of it at the board level. I think an organizational, like, you know, you know, maybe that builds out of the superintendent's group, or maybe it's, it's the board's own. But I think some, some, something that's a little more formal might, might be helpful for the board. I'm not sure how that would, would relate to what superintendent would be doing. But, but I, but I, but I think there is a room for growth in, in sort of sharing those kids or, or, or having a group that, that meets, meets with them as well.
Thank you. Mr. Townsend. Ms. Reynolds?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just think a testament to what the superintendent has been able to do with her advisory committee is when we started graduations this year, we had a group of her former advisory committee students that are all off in college now that text her and said, hey, how can we help? Is there anything that we can do with graduations? And so we had at least four or five previous students that stepped up and said, you know, we're, we know we're not a part of the district anymore, we're off at college, but how can we help and still stay involved, which I think has been huge.
Great point, Ms. Reynolds. Okay, Dr. Vogel?
Thank you. That is excellent. I think there are some very good ideas. And that's one of the things, as we're looking for a new superintendent, we're going to want to find out how he or she can engage students more in relationships with the board. I know some school districts have a council of, of student council presidents that they meet with on a monthly basis and so forth. But that was very productive discussion there. Like to move to board superintendent relationships, and we'll probably move through these relatively quickly. But maybe on that first one, I think we've talked a little bit about goals and expectations through the strategic plan. But do you have in place an evaluation system for the superintendent?
Yes, sir, we do. We have an evaluation document that is both goal-oriented, as well as goes through various characteristics and traits of the superintendent. And I can make that document available to you if you would like to peruse that.
That's excellent. Also, the Florida School Board Association, I'll give a little advertisement here, has a, has a workshop on evaluation of superintendents. But I think it's really good, if the board members have one in place already that they're familiar with, then I think that's really positive. We probably don't need to spend any more time on that unless at a future time the board would like to tweak it.
Ms. Miller has a comment?
I do, and it's, it's probably directed to the chair and to be discussed at a work session or a meeting. That document we have is very useful for information for you to pull from previous, it was useful for, to me, coming on as a board member to look at previous, previous evaluations. My question is, I'm assuming that evaluation was with that facilitator of our, of our meetings, and that may change. And so this is, it's a document that we currently have, but it may also change. I know there were a lot of questions about it. It was, you know, there was part of it that was a holistic approach. And some, we're so data-driven as a district, I would like to see it more data-driven, point-driven. So I would like to see what FSBA has available, and we will have discussions on what that will look like for us in the future. I'm assuming it will change when, as the facilitator changes.
Your point's well taken. Thank you. Dr. Vogel?
Thank you. As far as communication and chain of command protocols, and that's something I think one of the board members brought up. Once a new superintendent is selected, again, a little advertisement for the School Board Association, we do a roles and responsibilities workshop also. But maybe you can discuss that, how that process is working now. And I know there's always things that happen that would, because a lot of times, superintendents and board members don't know about issues that are happening. But maybe talk about that a little bit.
Okay. Ms. Fortney?
Well, I was actually going to comment on what Ms. Miller just said. I totally agree with her 110%. And I'm available for any training that makes us a better functioning board and communications open with the superintendent.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Well, I think anytime we can improve upon communication and the way in which we work together, I think, to me, one of the key important aspects of hiring a new superintendent is the communication piece. I think I'm looking for someone that not only has very good written communication, but oral as well, because so much is done verbally in board meetings and work sessions, as well as needing to be updated on policies and procedures. So I think communication is huge. And as I said earlier, the chain of command protocols need to be discussed, and I'm sure we'll have opportunity to do that with our school board meetings. Now I see Ms. Miller has her hand up.
I do. Just referencing this topic. I think, I'm questioning, can this be something, once a superintendent is hired, that we make part of the professional development that this person undergoes as far as communication? Because that has been, in my tenure, probably the one challenge that we have faced as a board, is productive and collaborative communication as a whole with our superintendent. I went back and looked at even our board member operating guidelines, and that's a great base to start with, because some of it's written there of how we should have been communicating. And unfortunately, we have not been able to do that. That's not been practiced. So is that something that we could build in to the agreement with the superintendent that is hired? Either professional development in that area, or some kind of group work sessions so that we have a collaborative seven-member board working with the superintendent staff?
Go ahead, Dr. Vogel?
Yes, absolutely. And I think that's another thing, I think that it, and we really appreciate the opportunity to work with you. But that's another feature of the services that the School Board Association provides, as well as John Reichert and I also work for the Superintendents Association, and we do provide that support. And we definitely can look at that. And thank you for bringing that up, and that's part of our, our process.
Okay. Go ahead, Dr. Vogel?
Emergency protocols, you know, are the board members, you pretty much have a process if there's an emergency or some situation that board members need to be notified of in place that is working well?
Okay, so due to the world in which we live, we've each had an opportunity to learn about the emergency crisis protocols in our schools, but it's something that we really don't discuss publicly. So I'm going to leave it at that. If another board member would like to comment, feel free to do so. Raise your hand, so I know that you're interested in making another comment. Okay, thank you. Dr. Vogel?
Thank you. And our final item is operation, how the board is operating with their workshop schedule and their meeting operations. Is everybody's have pretty satisfied with the model that you're using right now in terms of meetings and so forth? Do you have enough workshops? Maybe you might want to comment on that.
Ms. Fortney?
My humble opinion, no. And we are always rushed, I feel like.
Ms. Miller?
I think this is something that Ms. Fortney and I have talked about and agreed on multiple times. The amount of information in a work session is, it's always been, I've never, I think we've gotten out on time once. So I would like to look at that process. Also, we've been trying to transition into a different board docs. We're trying to transition from the agenda to board docs, and that kind of delays some of the information gathering. We get things Tuesday around 4:00 PM, and like, and we did that, yeah, we did that last Tuesday. And the time we have to go over multitudes of documents, I question sometimes. So I am a board member that is willing to meet more often. It's probably going to be based on what the needs are at the time. But going over a $2 billion budget, I think should be multiple work sessions. So that's something I would like to look, work with, with the superintendent moving forward, making sure that we have all of our information for informed decisions that we're required to make.
Thank you. Ms. Fields?
Okay, thank you. My AirPods died, so I did not hear the large portion of the beginning of the conversation about the board and the superintendent's relationship. I think that that's going to be, to me, a priority for us to, to find a way to, to work together better and to understand that we might not agree, but we need to disagree in a respectful manner towards one another. And be respectful of the staff, even though we might not like the information that they're bringing, but finding a way to just, to just be respectful of each other and respect each other's opinion. And I apologize for not being able to say that earlier. The one thing that I would say about our meetings, and I've mentioned this before, and I think that we just would have to come to some type of agreement as a board, is that I don't think that board members should be able to have conversations. We have a, a, a part of the meeting where board members can have comments. And we also have a part of the meeting where speakers can come and have comments, and they're given three minutes. And board members aren't giving any, any minutes. They talk as long as they like. And I think sometimes that is to the detriment of the meeting. And I think that we need to put something in place where we are, if we expect for our public speakers to come and only speak in three minutes, and we should be able to give our report, in my opinion, within a very reasonable amount of time and not, not go on and on and on. So that's just my take about the board meeting and workshops, work sessions. If there's a need to have additional work sessions, I think we all are willing to do that. We just need to have conversation about what that's going to look like and how often it's going to be.
Thank you, Ms. Fields. Ms. Reynolds?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just echoing a little bit of what Ms. Field said at the end, I think we're all more than willing to meet as often as necessary. But it's finding that balance of meeting for the information that we need and not taking districts' time that they need to be doing their other job that they're actually assigned to do to come and present to us. And how crucially, if the information that they're presenting to us is pertinent to our job, or if it's just information that is getting a little bit in the weeds. So I always am cautious of their time in that when you have cabinet taking an entire day for a board meeting multiple times a month, that's multiple days a month that they're not able to be managing their departments. So making sure that we're cognizant of their time as well.
Thank you, Ms. Reynolds. Anyone else? Back to Dr. Vogel.
One final advertisement for the protocols workshop that your professional organization offers, as well as master board training. So I know this board, some of the board members have been through that. So we're here to support you. We've concluded our, our whole pre-search interview, and I'd just like to make a comment. Board members, I can't see all of you, but you may not realize that I will tell you that the single most thing that superintendent applicants are looking at is the way the board works together. And I have been very impressed today, board members, you have been extremely consistent and in agreement on your successes, your challenges, and the direction that you want Polk County to move to. And I will tell you that full pre-search interview, if it, it could be a training session, because it is, it was so impressive, the way all of you have come together. And I think this is, this is why we like to do a session like this, because I'm leaving this with great information on what characteristics you're desiring in a superintendent, our whole team is. And so I want to thank all of you. And then I'll turn it back to you. And then I know Mr. Reichert may have some follow-up questions, and Mrs. Messina is on the call bridge right now, I believe. So thank you all very much, and back to you, Chairman.
Thank you so much, Dr. Vogel. Mr. Reichert, would you like to give us some closing comments?
My apologies. I agree with Dr. Vogel. He spent some great information. I have about eight pages of handwritten notes here that we'll get with Dr. Vogel and summarize and, and start giving us a feel for the person that you will be searching for and the talents of that person. Also, Madam Chair, if I could, in looking, or hearing some of the comments about kind of the, the meetings, the meeting segment of our discussion, and sometimes y'all are feeling rushed. I will try to avoid singular meetings that are designed for the superintendent search to discuss items. But I think it might be more appropriate, if I were to set aside maybe in our timeline, as I rewrite the timeline, to maybe do an individual meeting or two, to really focus on the superintendent search items that we need to kind of get in place, as opposed to trying to add those to maybe an existing workshop or board meeting, as I, it appears y'all have some, some very loaded agendas, which I certainly understand, especially with what we're all dealing with. So if you don't mind, I might add a couple of kind of new meetings where we can really focus on getting the, the majority of our work completed as soon as possible.
I think that's a great idea. And if possible, if you could let us know some of those dates to make sure, because all of us serve on numerous different organizations and boards and have personal commitments, it would be nice. So once you lay it out, maybe if you could give that to us to look at, as we discussed, maybe on Tuesday, we could run it by the board in work session, perhaps? And then that way, we'll be able to see if those dates actually work for everybody. But I would agree, I have held every one of these superintendent search meetings, not in conjunction with another meeting. We've done them separately, and I think it really works great. So.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, sir. And Ms. Messina, I see that you're there. Would you like to join us?
Yes, thank you. And I do want to say that I have been here the whole time, except for maybe a total of seven minutes, when I had to get off and get back on. But I, I've listened to everything, and I really, really appreciate the, the real honesty with which board members engaged in the conversation. It's important that we have a realistic picture of the district as it currently exists and where you want to go. That helps not only us when candidates ask us questions, but it also helps the candidates directly, and it helps the community have a good understanding. I don't know how often you guys are able to say some of the things that you said today in board meetings, because again, your schedules or your agendas are typically pretty full. So it helps for people to hear, you know, this is where we are, and this is what we're looking for, and this is what we're doing. So we're very excited about moving forward. I know that Mr. Reichert will be working on the adjusted timeline, and we are hoping to see you in person at your next meeting.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Messina. I thought it was a wonderful day. And board members, once again, thank you for all of your comments. And Ms. Fields, did you have another comment? Okay. If not, then I would say that, once again, thank you to our, our guest speakers. Ms. Fortney has one more comment?
This is just for the good of the group. If you press your spacebar, you are unmuted.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And actually, Madam Chair, this is Miss Messina again.
Yes, ma'am.
I did want to point out that we did anticipate the length of this conversation. We did schedule the workshop between 1:00 and 4:00, and
We did schedule the workshop between 1:00 and 4:00 and looking at the time, it appears we are right on target. I'm very proud of my team and yours.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Ms. Messina. And once again, thank you to everybody, especially our board members, for carving out the three hours to meet again today. And I thank everyone and I will see the board members on Tuesday, September 8th, starting with our work session at 12:30 and our board meeting at 5:00 PM in person at the Jim Miles Center. And this meeting is now adjourned. Everyone, please have a great day and thank you again.